Gentlemen, I'd entertain a motion to open the August 26 meeting.
Yes, move the motion, Mr. Chairman.
Pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America, with its stand, our nation, our people, and his visible liberty and justice for all.
You all right, Mike? All right. According to the agenda, this is a big night. We'd like to take and follow the agenda, and first we'd like to go to board and committee reports. Eric, what do you have for us?
Eric Swan, 14 Old Farm Way, Chairman of Municipal Building Committee. The committee has issued a report from CSS Architects that outlays two options for new facilities for Town Hall and the police station. There are two options in the report. The report lists a full program, it lists the issues, it lists a budget, and then it also proposes two other options which use the program from the first two for alternate sites. First program is renovations and additions, second program is new. Third option takes either renovations or additions, and the same thing with the fourth option. So, I appreciate you reading the report. I'm available to talk to any one of you to walk through the report. The committee is continuing to do assessment of taxes and financing and costs, and we'll have some more information on that shortly. And then we'll be able to present a better understanding of what and why we're recommending.
Now, question for me, Eric. There are four options?
Yes.
Do the top two options rise to the top of, is a recommendation?
The committee does not have a recommendation at the moment.
Okay.
I would think that the issues have been going on long enough since 2004 till today that sort of kind of doing things is probably not the right way and not the best value for the residents of the town. So, I'm not here to say to champion an all-new police station, but when you look at the program and you look at the existing and you look at the new, the spaces that make up a police station that any community of our size would have, our police station is currently a third of the size in the square footage and a space that really shouldn't be operating out of. So, that said, I'd like you to look at option two in the new program and start there and understand what that is.
Okay. Thank you and your committee for all its work.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, is that available on the website?
Not yet.
Citizens' concerns, seeing none. We're gonna jump down. Tracy, can I skip your report?
Sure.
And I would like to recognize the passing of someone and take a moment to reflect upon Christopher Drillik, who was, passed away July 22nd and left a large void in the lives of his family, friends, coworkers in this community. He was thoroughly involved in this community. Chris served on the 375th Anniversary Committee under Chair Jim Cunningham from 2006 to 2010. He was the clerk and treasurer of the Newbury Historic Commission from November 2/11 to present. He was also Chair of the Newbury Cultural Council and worked with diverse settlers under Barbara Rogers. He was instrumental in establishing websites for many of these organizations. He was tireless. Also very involved, I believe, in the Historic Commission. So, Chris's loss is obviously felt throughout the community and will extend our condolences to all and who knew him and had the privilege to work with him. Chief Riley, you have some recommendations for us and you have some other recommendations for us, right?
Yes. Lot of recommendations. Before you, you have a letter for new police appointments, and those would be two new reserves we're looking to put on. Dan Lee, who's an assistant harbor master now. He's also a reserve officer in the town of Rowley. Very well-trained, very good person, I think he'd be an excellent addition. And also Adam Sanborn as a new reserve. Passed an extensive background in psychological. We're gonna start him off, and looks like he'll be a good addition as well. Also before you, Officer John Lucy, who was just appointed as a full-time officer, came to me three weeks ago and decided to relinquish the full-time appointment, would still like to be appointed as a reserve. I think being in the school for the last two years, his career focus now is more in the educational perspective. He is looking to become a, finish his education and become a schoolteacher or a guidance counselor. And he'd still like to remain as a part-time employee. In his place, we're looking to appoint Andrew Bridges as the next full-time officer. He was next on the list, and Andrew would make an excellent full-time officer. As well as the missed appointments for emergency management that I neglected to put on the agenda at the very first selectmen's meeting. You have those before you.
All right, so, maybe the best way, and correct me, Michael, if you do not think it's the best way for the board to look at it and make a motion. Should we make a motion to accept the appointment of the full-time patrolman? Does that seem like the best thing to do?
Yeah.
All right, so, I would entertain a motion for that, and then we'll go after the harbor master and the emergency, you know, these others.
I'll move that we appoint the chief's request for a full-time patrolman.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Then I think probably you have in your full packet, Jim Valonis to be asked to be appointed as a harbor master and Robert Bishop for special police and emergency management responder. So, I would entertain an appointment.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Could I also get a motion on the two reserves and to...
Where are they?
Oh, I provided the letter.
Okay, this small letter?
Yep, it should be on department letterhead in your packet.
Is that in the big packet that came originally or in this paper? Don't worry, don't worry, guys.
I think you just might buy it. There you go.
It'll get better than this. Okay. Oh, within that, so, we, I understand. And the reserve patrolman would be John Lucy III.
John Lucy III.
Daniel Lee.
Daniel Lee and Adam Sam.
And Adam Sam.
Yes.
So, we'd entertain a motion for the reserve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Would you like to do your report, Tracy, or is it too long for 15 minutes?
Yeah.
That's it, that's it.
It's a good one, huh?
So, we're gonna head into the rest of the agenda, folks. We have a request before us for a Class II license from Auto Works of Hampton Falls. And if I understand this correctly, Kathy, they're looking to go into where that internet, no, car place was? Are they here?
Both the new for instance and the old.
Why don't you come up and...
The licenses.
Now, are you Auto Works of Hampton Falls?
Yes, myself and my business partner.
Come on right up to the microphone, guys. All right, tell us what you're thinking.
Well, currently operating out of 172 State Street. That property has been sold. We're looking to move into 88 Newbury Turnpike. We know the gentleman that's currently has a dealer's license there. We included in the packet a letter of intent. We have his concurrence that upon our approval or your approval for a license for Auto Works of Hampton Falls, he would rescind his license. So, we would be moving into that property, and he would be turning in his dealer's license.
Right. And you guys have been around since 1982?
Yes.
Did the original business?
Yes.
They've moved from Hampton Falls to Newburyport, like they said, and focusing mostly on Mercedes-Benz and other automobiles of that type?
Correct.
Great. So, I'll entertain a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Now, do we need to condition in any way, Tracy, that the other, that all get, the inner workings of getting the other license rescinded or back to us, how is that gonna work? Town clerk. All right, so you know how to do that then. All right. Sounds good.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
We're heading into one-day liquor license for a wedding at S, at the farm. September 13th, from 4:00 to 11:00 p.m. Is anyone here from it or just, no? Is it all in, everything look good?
Motion to approve.
Yep.
I have one comment on that. The one-day liquor licenses do require, according to the building inspector, the approval of the fire chief. And to date, I didn't notice that they had been approved.
When do they need it for us? September 13th? Kathy, can you get back in the room? And I think Billy can expedite. That sounds good. Make that motion, Chuck.
Yeah. Motion to approve contingent upon the fire chief.
Mike?
Second.
Good. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, moving right along. We have a six-one-day liquor licenses for Protection 5 and Protection 2 for functions on September 20th, 27th, October 4th, October 18th, November 15th, November 22nd, from 6:00 to 10:00 p.m. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
This one needs a fire chief, too, contingent?
Contingent upon approval of the fire chief.
I'll second.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Greg, you could be up, but if we don't get through it, then we'll move you over. We have a request for the entertainment permit from the Beach Comer for Sundays, 4 to 7, and one Saturday a month from 7:00 to 10:00 p.m. on August 26 to the first meeting in January, which is 1/13/15. See letter, the letter's in your packet. Have anyone looked at the letter? If you want, I will read the letter. Would it be better for you guys? The Palm Island Beach Comer would like to request an entertainment permit for Sundays from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. and one Saturday a month from 7:00 to 10:00 p.m. The permit would be from this day, August 26, to the next selectmen's meeting in January 2015. At that time, we would come before the board and ask for another six months continuation. This is a letter we were asking for before, so, you know, it's more succinct. If you have any reasons, if you have any reason we plan to fundraise or a special event on days other than those that are specified, I will come before the board and ask for admissions to have entertainment. We have compiled with the, we have complied with the recommendations of building inspector to have crowd control certificate, also other measures to ensure the safety of our patrons. I have requested a decibel meter to measure any noise coming from the building so that we will adhere to a level that's acceptable by law. Your consideration and continued support of the Beach Comer is greatly appreciated. Greg, anything you want to add to that?
Oh, me?
Yeah. Did you say it all?
No, it pretty much says it all.
Now, I'll entertain a motion before we enter into some discussion. So, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve the entertainment license?
Do, licenses basically, but one license. Do we have a second? I'll second it to move it along for discussion. Can I do that? Can I do that, Lisa? Yes, thank you. All right. Let's have some discussion, guys.
So, I guess the first question, Greg, is how this differs from the license we approved at the last meeting beyond adding the Saturday, the one Saturday a month?
The amplification of it all. We have no amp now, so we just have a basic, guys come in and play without any, you can't, they don't, really can't hear a singer. You can't hear somebody playing piano. We're looking for just some amplification of that.
So, for a little clarification, even though this letter doesn't state it's amplified music, you're looking for amplified music?
Well, yeah, I mean, it's a basic, it's open. Sometimes we will have it, sometimes we won't have it. It's kind of a, you know, it's, for the most part, it's just wide, you know, it's open, but we just want to make sure that, you know, we're, we complied with the, working with the building inspector about a shut-off system or even a higher decibel system. If there was a fire alarm, the decibels for the fire alarm in there now was deafening. If we added another one, it would be, I guess, more. Crowd control, you know, we've done all that. We're just looking for, you know, the 4 to 7 on a Sunday and one Saturday a month.
Now, we didn't get a second. Do you guys care to talk about why?
I'm, yeah. I have no problem with him having a restaurant down there, but I'm against it turning into a nightclub with entertainment and whatever else could go along with it. If he wants to apply for a nightclub and the people want to allow it after hearing, then so be it. But to do this and the way it's floating around all over the place, some amplified music, some non-amplified music, the hours are gonna be fluctuating. There's no control over it. And from my perspective, from where I come from, when you have people in a confined space drinking and then with the, you know, the vibration in the building and outside, the neighbors, the houses are close together. And we've had complaints on this in the past, and I just don't want to promote it. I don't want to be behind it because the rest of people disaster is there.
Chuck?
Yeah, I received two calls from neighbors next to you, and they said that they went in and it was amplified. They said they could clearly hear it in their house. They also said that it was 7:30 and beyond, that the music was still playing. This concerns me deeply, Greg. He also said that you had not a verbal altercation, but it, the conversation didn't go well. Okay, I'm gonna leave it at that.
I just don't, if there was a problem, someone should have called the police, if that was a problem, because it's hearsay. I didn't have an altercation with anybody. You know, as far as the building noise outside, the decibel reader would solve all that. The Beach Comer in 40 years has had entertainment. With the decibel reader outside, that would definitely appease anybody of what is acceptable and not acceptable. If, you know, it's not a nightclub, it's a restaurant. It's a family restaurant. You go down there and, okay. It's a family establishment. 4 to 7 on a Sunday is not unreasonable. One Saturday a month is not unreasonable.
That's what it was supposed to be, and now it's morphing into a Saturday. And how much longer before it morphs into a Friday?
Nothing, sir.
I'm deeply concerned about it.
Nope, it wouldn't.
I really am.
Depending on what we do, Chuck, nothing beyond this will occur to January 2015. But can I ask Kathy or someone else, because I forget, what did we agree to or did we agree to? Did we agree to every Sunday at our last meeting until, until, to the first meeting in January? So, the only ancillary component of this is the Saturdays once a month. And the fact that verbally you're talking about amplification. So, remember that two things are in a different. Greg's verbally, this letter doesn't, but Greg verbally talked about amplification and one Saturday a month. You already have the okay for Sundays.
Correct. But if, you know, like if you wanted to have somebody playing the piano, you can't hear them. And if you wanted to have somebody to sing, you can't hear them. It is 4 to 7 on a Sunday. It's, it's so reasonable. It's...
I mean, right now, we don't have a full board. I don't know if that's working to your advantage or not working.
Doesn't sound like it right now.
I would entertain a motion to table till we have a full board, if that helps the situation at all. Do I have a motion to do that in a second?
Motion to table this till the next selectmen's meeting?
All right, wait a minute. I would entertain from, something from the audience. Go ahead.
Thank you very much. My name is Kevin Kelly. I'm a Plum Island resident, and I do frequent the Beach Comer. I've been there on Sundays a number of times. I've never seen them in the last six or nine months go beyond 7 o'clock. I go outside every week when it's as loud as it gets and listen in the parking lot, and I don't hear the music. I would like to make one point on the amplification, and that is, you know, I'm asked to come up to speak to a microphone, as are all of you, and to try to perform music without the use of some sound system. Amplification does not mean cranking up the volume to blow the roof off. It means being able to manage the sound so that a singer and a fiddler or a guitar player can all be heard in a reasonable way. And I think what Greg's proposed, a limit on the volume, whether it's through a decibel meter or whatever, is perfectly reasonable. But to ask any type of music thing, you can go to any coffee house in Massachusetts, and they will have an electronic sound control in there so that the sound is balanced and pleasing to everybody listening. So, I think, you know, I think maybe the term amplification has people nervous that it's gonna be extremely loud. But I think that can be taken care of with a limitation on the sound, as Greg has proposed. Thank you.
Once again, Billy, go, go ahead. Step up the microphone.
Hi, I'm the fire chief, and I was wondering why this...
The fire chief or not the fire chief tonight?
Uh, both.
Okay.
I would like to know why it isn't going to be sprinkled. On the entertainment license or anybody over 100 people going to thing on a 26G, it shall be sprinkled. The building, if you're gonna go over 100 people. And Sam says it should be over 55. We only got one way on and off the island, and we got a call fire department, and I would like to see it sprinkled before you go any farther with this. The, if he doesn't go, he said already that he's gone over the 100 people when he was there, and I'd just like to see it sprinkled by the, what it says in the 26G and a half.
All right. Thanks, Billy.
Thanks, Joe.
The building is, the zoning on the building is 98 people.
Yep.
With, you ever been there on a Sunday? There's not 100 people in the building. There's 100 people in a building, I guess, every, I don't know if there really has been. We haven't gotten caught at it, we haven't, nobody said, hey, you, nobody walked in on the Beach Comer and said, hey, there's over 100 people in this building. I have no proof that there is 100 people in that building. We're zoned at 98, we keep it at 98. That's what we have. If this is a, if you want me to sprinkle, I need to have a lot of fundraisers and some benefits, and I'm gonna have some music. It's $40,000 that I don't have. It is a one-level building. There is no steps, no stairs, no obstacles to get out. There are four entrances out of the building. I...
All right, here's where we stand now, at least in my thinking. I think you probably ought to table it, or you have already something in place that carries you for entertainment on Sunday.
Okay.
You could withdraw this. I don't have a problem maybe with one of my other board members sitting with Sam and yourself and finally talking about this from one side to the other side. So, there's no room for any misunderstandings one way or the other. If you'd like to do that, I will do that with you.
That would be great.
All right, so, I would, if I were you, I would ask to withdraw this. And, 'cause I, you're not gonna get a vote on it tonight, anyway.
I'm not gonna get a vote on it, no. Okay, I, I'll withdraw, table it. I'll come back next month, and we'll try it again.
Get ahold of me, and one of my board members that wants to will sit and will ask Sam to sit with us, and we'll really thrash this thing out once and for all, so we know what we have.
Okay. Thank you.
I'd say it's withdrawing. So, and that allows the other, what he has in place, to still be in place.
Pretty close to 7:30, Joe.
I think probably, I mean, I might look over at Lisa Mead and ask for some advice, but I think we should probably enter into our situation and discuss our situation. Guess what, guys? How many of us do you count here? We are missing one of our selectmen for our public hearing tonight. Is the correct turn supermajority? Four out of five? I will ask for Lisa's advice and maybe what Tracy would like to do and what Borrega would like to do. But I think probably you're rolling the dice to continue with only us four board members because, Lisa, why don't you explain? We don't have what in place?
No, but we do.
We do?
Yeah, so, the, yeah, Mr....
Kudos. I'll let you explain it. Go ahead.
Mr. Chair, the town in 2007 adopted the Mullins Rule, so the board could continue with the absent member. The absent member would then have to watch the recording of this and have to certify they had watched it and then come in at the next meeting and participate in that regard. So, or as the chair was suggesting, it would be up to you to just continue the hearing and open it, open it tonight and continue it until the board members present. You can only miss one meeting as a Mullins Rule.
Could the, theoretically speaking, could the board vote, understanding that all four would need to be in favor for it to, without the fifth president?
Theoretically speaking?
Or just, no, could they vote if they wanted to vote on this?
Well, if the board was so inclined that you did this really super duper presentation and everybody was here, and that was what they wanted to do, and if they called for a vote, you would need all four members.
Right, in other words, you were asking, could you get the supermajority out of us four?
Yeah.
Maybe, you know?
But you, but you do need all four votes. If you were to proceed tonight and the board was to close a public hearing and deliberate and vote, you would need all four votes. Or if they, if you opened and they did the presentation and decided they needed to continue it because they didn't have enough information, then the board member would join them at the next meeting. And if the board member watched the tape, signed an affidavit saying he watched the tape, he could then participate in the rest of the hearings.
Right. So, considering the timing of the essence for the viability of the projects, I think our preference, and we'd like to understand your preference, too, but would be to continue because what I would want to avoid is continuing it to some date in the future and then going through our presentation and finding out, you know, some additional information, and then it gets continued again. So, by doing it tonight, we can sort of at least get all of your questions out there and make sure we fully understand... and make sure we fully understand any additional information that we need to get back to you for the next meeting.
To be honest with you guys and I, I want the, um, I want my board to weigh in on this too. And, um, there's quite a few people here tonight, so maybe a full presentation unless Lisa sees folly to this at all. All the information we just received two days ago, all the information I received tonight, I don't think you're going to get through these tonight anyway.
Sure.
I mean, I, I don't know what the board's going to decide, but there is a tremendous amount of information to go through. So, um, I don't have any problem and I'll ask the board if they don't have a problem. I don't have a problem with starting this and being able to have David watch it on TV and sign a certificate because there's a lot to go through.
Right.
So, what would, what would the board like to do?
My preference is to begin a public hearing today so that questions can be asked and answered and we get more information before the next meeting.
I concur.
So...
That was, that was my point.
So, I mean, and what happens then, Lisa?
Well, it would be the same things, um...
They get one time, each person gets one time?
Each, each person can miss one time and still read the... And if, let's say at the next meeting you're going to close, um, and the applicant was okay with four people voting on it, at that time you could vote on it with four people. If that, if that was the practice of the applicant or...
Okay.
Do you have, um, we, we can get there later in the meeting, but do you have the ability to continue it to a date where all five could be present?
I mean, I think that's reasonable. I think that's reasonable.
Yup.
So, want to see how we do tonight? All right. I would like to open the public hearing. The public hearing was to be at seven thirty PM. We will be handling these things separately. We will be reading the public notice, Damon. I'll pass it to you if you don't have it right there, wait a minute. Separately, um, we're going to look at Eight Middle Road first. And, um, that's the public notice. And then after Damon reads the public notice, I'll condition some of the pathways that we'll take for this public hearing.
Notice is hereby given that the Board of Selectmen, as agents of the Zoning Board of Appeals, will hold a public hearing Tuesday, August twenty-six, two thousand and fourteen, at seven thirty PM at the Newbury Town Hall, Twenty-Five High Road, Newbury, Mass., on the application of Steve Long, uh, Burgo Solar...
Borrego.
Borrego Solar Systems, Inc., eleven fifteen Westford Street, second floor, Lowell, Mass., oh-one-eight-five-one. Applicant seeks a special permit for relief from section ninety-seven dash five F-two C of the Newbury zoning bylaws for the construction of a two thousand four hundred and fifteen megawatt DC STC rated ground mounted solar array on property located at Eight Middle Road, assessors map R forty-seven dash zero dash thirty-five and R forty-seven dash zero dash twenty-six. As the proposed, construction is use of a scale that requires approval in the form of a special permit from the Board of Selectmen. All interested parties should attend the hearing. A copy of the application is available for review at the Office of the Selectmen, Newbury Board of Selectmen.
Thank you. You almost does it as well as you used to, Chuck. I'd like to talk to everyone tonight a little bit before we head into this. We are the special granting authority and we have taken this very seriously. And I'd like to give you a little bit of an idea how we'd like to proceed. We have here tonight, and we will review, two solar installations and standards with respect to placement, design, construction, operation, monitoring, modification, and removal of said installations. The standards are designed to address public health, safety, and welfare concerns, minimize impacts, and provide adequate financial and assure the eventual decommission and disassembly. Remember, I think it's very important, that this town voted at public meeting to adopt this bylaw. So, the town voted to allow solar arrays into this town and the state encourages them. To assure solar array installations are controlled, the town has adopted the ground-mounted solar photovoltaic installation bylaw. We all have those copies before us tonight somewhere, guys, okay? And we're going to try, I'm going to do the best of my ability and I want you guys to be creative and everyone at the table to help me through maybe examining each section of the bylaw because I think that's probably the only way to theoretically do a good job. It could take a long time. We have also really put together a very qualified group of people to help us through this. We have Lisa Mead, that is our town council. And you've probably been involved with how many numerous of these? So, certainly not new at it. Michelle and Tracy are working through all the financial obligations and affiliations. Hong Kong with Doug Packer are investigating all the wetland concerns. And Martha has been really diligent and very helpful, our town planner, in really proofing the submittal for completeness, which is a huge job. So, and all of these people will play a part and maybe speak tonight as we proceed. And if this is granted, I want to assure the town and any of the people that Sam, our building inspector, and Mr. Robitaille, our electrical inspector, has already looked for peer review. There'll be, this is, this won't be done poorly if it goes through, if the special permit, you know, if we close the public hearing and decide to write up our findings and make a decision. This will be, and the concerns of everyone, to the best of my ability, will be heard tonight. And I will put it on your backs, guys. I don't want our board answering the questions because we're not qualified to answer the questions. You guys will answer the questions. So, hearing that, I'd kind of like to follow this process. I think we will hear the presentation from the applicant. If you want to have some discussion at the board level at that point, we can. Then we would like to hear the people that could be in favor of the application. They can go up to the microphone and give their name and speak. Then we would hear those people that are opposed to the application and they would go up to the microphone and speak and they would give their names. Then the board will certainly have some questions. We'll try to have the gentleman from Borrego be able to answer some of the questions from the board and audience. And then I think we would start to wade into the actual bylaw itself. Does that seem... All right, so, I guess it's all in your hands, guys. We're going to do the, uh, we're going to do the Eight Middle Road one first.
Is this the best spot, ready?
Long as they can see to.
I was going to give just a basic, hopefully somewhat brief intro... Hopefully somewhat brief introduction to the project. The first, the first one is Eight Middle Road. It's located on, adjacent to Route One, Middle Road, and Highfield Road. There are going to be three arrays total, each accessed from a different road. Array one will be off Route One here. The system will be here. The second array will be accessed off Middle Road through an existing driveway to this location here. And the third array will be on, on this parcel here. It will be accessed from Highfield Road and the electric easement. There are actually two parcels for this project that are divided by the electric easement. The total is eighty-seven acres for the two parcels combined. This system will be two point four megawatts divided amongst the three systems. And the area contained within the fence where the array will be is approximately ten acres. This is in the light industrial zone, um, business light industrial zone. We, we're here before the board tonight for a special permit. And we're also went before the Conservation Commission for a notice of intent, which last Tuesday they granted that. We submitted stormwater for this project, which was looked at by the Conservation Commission and was submitted with our special permit also.
What did, can you repeat that, please?
The stormwater analysis?
No, what did you, what, what did you just say about the Hong Kong?
They reviewed the stormwater themselves.
But they, they didn't sign off, they're still...
On this project, they signed off.
Okay, good. Now I understand.
Yup, sorry.
All right.
A couple of things that were revised based on Hong Kong comments from when we first submitted the plans to the Board of Selectmen for the special permit. The floodplain elevation changed in the time between we submitted it until now. That new floodplain, it went from elevation eight to elevation ten. And now comes adjacent to the property here and actually goes on to this array here. So, a portion of this is located in the flood hazard zone. As comments also, we were asked to go to the fire department and police department, which we did, to check and see if there were any issues with access to the arrays. And they did not have any issues with access. Fire department asked that we provide an aux box at the gates and provide them with some training on solar. A lot of us did a site walk and went down, walked the whole site. I know a few of you were there and got a good sense of where this is going to be out there on Middle Road. That's a brief overview of the whole project. I can go in depth later when you have your questions, I'm sure. But that's an overview of it.
Any discussion, guys? Any questions?
You want to have us discuss, then?
No, it's just, do you have any questions on what was said? And then when, we're going to have a lot of discussion, I imagine there'll be other discussions where we get into...
I just want to ask you to speak up a little louder for me, please.
There'll be a lot more discussion when we really start to head into the bylaw. I was just asking our board if anything, from what they just heard, do they want any clarification? Now, I would proceed to, is anyone in the audience that would like to speak in favor of the Eight Middle Road solar array? Fred. Name? Yeah, great.
Fred, Fred Thrillo, Twenty-Six Marsh Avenue. I'm a great supporter of green energy. I have a turbine myself, wind turbine myself. And I just, I think this is a great idea. I support both, both of projects. But I, I would like to remind the board, Jeff made a, made a good point and I, I almost left because you made such a good point. But this is an allowed use by special permit. It is allowed in these, in these zoning districts as long as they meet the requirements of those special permits. And that is your, that is your assignment. That's all I need to say.
Thank you, Fred.
Thanks, Dad. Is anyone else would like to speak in favor? Go ahead. Name and where you live.
I'm John Harwood, One Sixty-two High Road. So, you can see I don't live very near this, where this project is. That's not my interest in it. But I do have a great deal of confidence in this board and all of the town officials and the wisdom of the voters that passed the documents that we're working under tonight, that this is something that the town needs to do its part for. Unfortunately, the way things work out, you don't always get to be either near or far away from all of the things that you'd either like to be near or far away from. And I think we have to take that into account. There is the interest of the whole town here and the larger interest of, of the need to pursue green energy as well as to meet the needs as best we can of people who live near projects like this when they're proposed. And I have confidence in the Board of Selectmen and in all of our town officials that they will do that, that they will listen and within the guidelines they have before them will do the best they can with a proposal like this. So, I'm very much in favor of proposals like this and I hope the board will give it full consideration. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
And now, we're going to ask for those people opposed. And before I do that, I'm going to turn to the right and ask a question of Lisa. As our audience were to get up and spark, to talk about things that they are in opposition to, more clarity is going to be shed as we go through the bylaw. So, can I ask for some comments now? But I'm sure as we get into the parts of the bylaw that they have deep thoughts about, they're going to want to speak again. How should, what would be the best way to handle this?
Mr. Chair, I think that, that's up to you. If you could, if you go through the entire bylaw tonight and have an opportunity for more public comment, you could ask for it then, or if you continued it and more information came forward from the applicant, you could open up to public comment again at that time, but that's certainly at your discretion.
All right, I'm going to do this. I'm going to ask the audience to get up if they have opposed thoughts to this and maybe state their thoughts. And we will recognize those thoughts. And Lisa is certainly writing down a lot of what will be said. And before getting into tremendous breadth and scope, why don't we duly note your concerns? Because I can't imagine that you won't want to speak about those concerns as we get deeper into the bylaw. And does that make sense to everyone? And if you get up there and you find that you want to speak a little more, I'll allow that too. So, we'll open this up now for all those opposed. So, whoever is opposed, go to the microphone, state your name and address and we'll duly note. Go ahead.
Question, how are you going to present the, are you going to present them as...
You go to the microphone, please, because no, no one will hear us. Joni, go to the, go to the microphone, please.
For clarification of the process, how are you going to present? There are two different arenas here. So, are you going to go through, I mean, because there will be different questions on both. How, how will you present this? Will you do it all, try to do it all at once?
No, no. We are concentrating completely, unequivocally on Middle Road at this time.
Okay.
And that's probably why no one else got up. So, it'll give everyone a, a little different feel for things as we try to work through the best way for us to go and provide clarity with the submittal and our bylaw. And we're working on the one that was in the industrial zone first, which makes better sense. And it's, it's a process for us all to, you know, be, be a part of.
Then you'll deal with the next one at...
Absolutely.
After, after that, with the same sentence.
Yeah, one o'clock tonight, we'll get to that.
Okay.
All right. All right, hearing at this time, no opposition to the application. I'll also at this, I'll ask my board one more time, is there anything that you want to talk about? to talk about before we head into maybe looking at the bylaws and applicability?
No.
All right. Now, the beginnings, if you've got the bylaw in front of you, everyone, pull it right up. And let's look at it piece by piece, because I don't know another way that would make any sense to go through this. And Martha, where are you? You've done a million public hearings, is there another way to do this that makes any better sense? Lisa?
No, I don't think so. I mean, I guess there, there would be two ways to go through the bylaw. Or I think that Martha had prepared a memo?
Yep.
That addressed some of what the planning board thought as shortcomings in the application.
I saw that.
So I think that if you start to go through the general requirements of the bylaw and the submittal requirements?
Yep.
That will tie in with Martha's memory and with some other thoughts that Tracy and I might have.
Great, that's good. All right, so if we're going to go to 97, 9770 in, in our New Breed Code, that's going to be some of your general requirements. The board is looking at them right now. For the people that are in the audience, these are pretty benign requirements. These are some of the things about a building permit and a fee. And you can't go run and make your solar installation without getting a special permit. These are pretty general. And once again, we were lucky enough to have Martha really look into these as our town planner and make sure that the submittals were proof for completeness. And I think those things are pretty benign. If anyone else has looked at the bylaw intensively and feels differently, forever hold your peace or speak. We're going to be heading then into the next part that starts to get a little more rubber on the road. And that's called, the installation requires a special permit. And that's when these things get to be of a certain size, which is two acres, and they have to go for a special permit before they can proceed. And the special permit granting authority, as we've already discussed, at this time is the selectman and the team. Mike and everyone, you with me?
Yep.
All right, what I'd like to have the board do, for the sake of the people in the audience too, is as I start into these things, and if anyone has anything that makes better sense, like, like Lisa said, Martha, if you want to start to kick in something. But we'll start to examine these submission requirements and some of these general things. And we, you can ask Martha if that's been, or if you can ask Lisa, maybe, do they think, or you can also ask the team from Borrego. That's how, you know, you'll get your answers tonight from the board. Those answers, I hope, satisfy some of the answers for the people in the audience. One of the things that makes sense is one of the most important, one of the things that kind of started this thing off was, we had a pre-application review, and that was a meeting that was held on April 17, 2014. And that included, or was going to include, a lot of the people, selectmen, police, planning board, they've all been notified. And that happened early in the process. Jumping from that, I probably think one of the more important things is going to be some of the submission, specific submission requirements. And those are for two acres or more. And it should be filed in accordance with the rules and regulations of the Board of Selectmen as a special granting authority. So, I mean, one of the things you can read, my board can read, you folks can't see in the audience, but it's going to be, you know, boilerplate stuff like asking, is there nine copies of applications for this? Martha, did they have nine, you know, all, all sites and plans and maps stamped, signed by a professional engineer? All right, so we're moving forward. The names and addresses, phone numbers, original signatures, all those things. The legal right and documentation for the applicant to, you know, use the land, all those things have been ground truth, right? We've done them. Go, yes.
On the plans, I just want to confirm, the applicant presented tonight, that they had changed the plans from the time the Board of Selectmen received the plans, based upon the Conservation Commission meeting and approval? And did you give an updated set of plans to the board as a result of your approval last week?
That's because of the flood, floodplain?
Right.
I submitted them, updated plan for that.
So the plans that the CONCOM approved, the new floodplain, were submitted to the board of?
Yeah.
And the Conservation Commission was also, were duly involved in the stormwater part of that too? Jon, they were involved in that?
Yes, they were. The plan, the Conservation Commission did look at all of it.
It goes on to ask things that are really the things that Martha looked into far as, such as propy lines, you know, 50-foot setbacks, all the things. And I think, proof of liability of insurance, that has to be provided in 30 days, you're going to have to agree to that. Was there a performance bond in there, Martha?
It wasn't.
All right. Public outreach, you might end up doing a little more of if we do some communication with you. And also a training, Billy, is Billy here? A training for the fire service, okay? And they talk about the plans and documents of the stormwater, which some people have real concerns about, we'll talk a little bit more tonight. And that really is being vetted by the CONCOM, right, Jon?
That is correct.
All right. And we have some findings on, from the Conservation Commission, on the one we're examining now, Tracy, on stormwater, do we, Jon?
We have voted to issue an order of conditions.
For eight Middle Road?
For the Ashaw project, or the one with Middle Road project.
All right.
So that basically sets us that we're, we're together on that. On that one, not the other. The other one is still pending further investigation.
So now, returning to the bylaw, this is where it starts to get into a position where I think the board's going to need to really bear down on questions, because I don't want to have them all. And I want the audience to think about it, too. It's pretty, pretty straightforward, but some of the information we got, which this bylaw asked for, I got tonight. And I'm into the pot with the special permit review criteria. Open space agricultural impacts consistent with the town's open space preservation goals, the owner of the land on which the large-scale ground-mounted solar photovoltaic installation is proposed to be situated must submit to the SPGA a report of open space impacts for the installation, including but not limited to. General description of the installation site includes approximate natural features, flora, fauna, wetlands, waterways. And I'm going to ask you guys if you had to go to natural heritage and endangered species. So you had to provide all that for them, right? Did you have to go to those guys?
No, there's no on this project.
All right. Any trees or wildlife to be displaced by the installation, any efforts to mitigate groundwater management issues caused by increase in impervious surface? So that's what we're looking at now, guys. So let's start with A. Any general description of the installation site, including approximate natural features, fauna, flora, wetlands? Is there anything at the eight Middle Road site that you guys know of or have thought of, or anyone else within the team want to speak to about the? Martha, should, did you get a chance to look at supposedly the open space and agricultural impact report that came tonight?
I want to point out that is not new information, it's directly from our application. We just separated it out, so you could have a separate document for that.
But remember, if you look at this bylaw, they asked for that report, not dispersed throughout 800 pages.
Yeah.
Because now it's hard for me.
Jeff?
Yes, ma'am.
People don't go to the microphone, people can't hear them.
Excuse me?
People don't go to the microphone, people on TV can't hear at all.
There you go. Same thing we always do. Does my board have any questions on special permit criteria? And we're looking at A. Knowing that, Martha, you might have to go to the microphone. What do they say in their report? And then I'm going to ask you, you guys, to tell me the answer to that.
Basically, excuse me, basically, the report does reiterate things that they've talked about in their various presentations and information that was, was included in the notice of intent. There is some outdated information in what they provided today, because they're still referencing the July 3, 2012 FEMA maps. And we know that they've been updated to the, the 2016 FEMA maps, I mean, 2014 FEMA maps, July 16. And I don't know, especially for the Middle Road site, you know, whether, whether that does then impact some of the, the discussion that you have about banks or any of the other, other stuff. So that, that may be something that needs to be clarified. And there were a couple of other things in here. One, indetermining whether to issue a special permit, the SPGA shall consider the open space and agricultural impact report and the corresponding impacts. You've continued to say no comment there, even, even though you're providing this, so. And then also, the, the next one was about land clearing, soil erosion and habitat impacts. The last sentence of that is, the applicant and any co-applicants may be required to replace up to 100% of any and all trees of the caliber six inches or over that are removed for the project. And again, your, your response to that was no comment. So that's still something that I think probably the board may want to see more, you know, more response to. So those were the, the two things that I saw. And that really, that applies to, to both projects, but we're focusing on this one, so.
And I think, in essence, guys, if you really look at that, that kind of sums up a lot of the special permit criteria concerns that are in that part of it. For the audience, as you get into the second part of this, a lot of those concerns are still kind of elaborated from, from this. Lisa, listening to the report of our town planner, would the board want to ask, is a condition or whatever, that, I mean, we need more information?
I think in order for the board to be able to address that criteria, particularly G regarding land clearing, you're going to need to know how many six-inch or more caliber trees are being removed from the site. Because you have, you know, you have the ability to mitigate for that, up to 100% of that. And you need, short of guessing, you need the information from the applicant. And they, they don't address it in this report at all. They attempt to address it in the other project, but they don't talk about that in this report. They say no comment, as Martha suggested. Similarly, you're going to want to know what the cost of revegetation is, because that ties into the decommissioning bond. And they mentioned that this is going to be revegetated at the decommissioning in E of their submittal. But they don't say what the estimated cost is in their decommissioning cost estimate. So they need to provide that information to you as well. And finally, the board ought to know what they're going to be doing in the area that's outside of the total clearing, where the stumps are going to remain, and whether or not that's going to be revegetated, because it merely says that it will be cleared and the stumps will remain, but it doesn't say what the final product is during the life of the project.
Now, is there the ability to answer for the board some of those? Go ahead. Lisa, kind of keep a check of what you said.
Thanks, I'm Joe Harrison, project developer at Borrego Solar. Thank you, Chairman, and members of the board. In respect to the, the tree clearing, I, I consider myself an environmentalist, so it's an important issue for me. I think that you've done a great job in creating the solar bylaw. And I think that you have the discretion to give relief on certain terms if you think that that's appropriate. And, you know, the bylaws should probably be something that evolves. This is the first project to go through the process. And you may find that you need to revise it at the end of this, at the end of this process. I think what you have here is a commercially zoned area. So if I were up here looking to get approval, well, I guess the first point is that the landowner has the right to remove trees that are in uplands areas by right. So, you know, up here, this is a field, there are no trees. There are trees in, you know, this is all clear. There are some trees in these two arrays are fairly wooded. But if you wanted to put a commercial operation in there, you know, zone commercial, you wouldn't need to go out and measure every tree that's above six inches in, in diameter, you know, if a Walmart were going in here or a gas station. So I think it's an unreasonable burden for a solar project. Because, again, these are low-value trees in a commercially zoned area where, within the first year, the fact, the solar panels are going to more than make up for the CO2 that the trees are absorbing. And you're talking about a 20-plus-year project. So it's by far a net benefit when you're talking about the environmental impact. And you think about the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, there's actually more trees now than there were 50 years ago. There were more farms back then, and a lot of those farms have now grown in. And, again, I just want to stress that the land, from the landowner's perspective, Tom Bashaw, he wants to develop his property, it's zoned commercial. He has the right to remove those trees. So because of that, we're, we're asking for relief on the tree issue for this project. And we'd like to take your comments and have a chance to respond.
I think I'll ask for some discussion from the board and think about what he just said, because he makes a good point in the fact that this is commercial industrial. Joe, can you go back up there for a second? Will you give me a definition of a low-value tree?
Well, I'm not a tree expert, but they're, they're scrubby, small diameter trees for the most part. And this land was cleared within the past 50 years, if not more recent than that. So it's, it's not old-growth forest, it's new growth.
And, I mean, and myself, I did go on a site walk, and I'm not so sure. So anyway, what's the discussion at the board level?
My feeling is that it's hard to make any sort of mitigation without having an actual count of what's going on. You can't say, oh, well, it's okay to cut down those trees if we don't really know how many trees there are. And so it seems like, since it's written into the zoning law a number of times about trees, it seems to me it's very important to at least get a count so that we know what we're deciding to either allow to pass without mitigation or what needs to be mitigated.
Michael?
Are you all aware of what he said? If this was on a solar project, if somebody was building a house or some type of commercial property, they could clear the, they could clear the trees. And I have some strong feelings, I mean, you can't save every tree and still have people who live here and function. And I think, I think we have to look at the whole project. And, you know, what's good for the town of Uber? We need, we need the revenue that we could get from this project. We're not, if, if we don't, if some of these new projects don't start, if we don't allow them to come in and so they start functional and so that we can start getting, add to our tax base, we're going to be dead in the water. You know, we need a police station. I'm sure there's going to be more need for the schools. And, you know? I'm sure there's going to be more need for the schools, and, you know, sometimes the trees have to come down. And then some of the trees, the trees that we have around here, I know on my property, if you don't take them down, they rot in the middle, and they come down anyway. So I, you know, I don't think, and I'm familiar with this, with these, I'm very familiar with these two projects are, and these aren't well-established trees. I mean, these aren't like the ones that are hanging off of Newman Road or the Elms that used to go down High Road. These are, you know, they're much smaller, and that wasn't.
They did.
Cut that off at one time. It wasn't that long ago, and, because that was always a field. The one on, the one I'm thinking of is the one on, off of Main Street. But I, you know, I don't think we should allow the tree thing to stop the project. I just, I just don't think that's right, and then I don't want to see the property owners not being able to do what they do, what they can do or want to do with their property. I feel strongly about that. You know, we asked them to pay taxes all these years, they pay taxes on it, whatever, and a chance comes along to do something, and this is clean energy. This isn't fossil fuels, this isn't coal, this is, they don't, people don't want us to burn wood anymore, you know? You know, it gets pretty cold in the winter, all right? So they came up with a way, technology to draw power from coal and winter lines, and, you know, I think we have to look at this and keep going into the future, and try to, so that we all can benefit, the property owner, the town, and the companies that are putting in these installations.
Okay. On the site walk, I did not see any high-quality trees there. Site to site, it's always going to be different. This particular site, I think they're within their right to ask for relief from this section of the bylaw.
Lisa, if our board was entertaining relief at that level from the bylaw, especially in this location, would we take and ask for a motion now, or would it be written later in the conditions?
Yeah, there's, first of all, there's no waiver provision.
Or relief.
In the bylaw. What it, what the language is, is in the criteria is that you may require to replace up to 100% of any and all trees six inches or greater. So, you know, it's not a requirement that you ask for that relief, and so if the board decides they don't want any further information on that, then the board can decide they don't want any further information on it. They have, you can make the determination later on as you see fit.
All right.
Yes? I have a clarification. Kathleen Pearson, planning board. I'm not objecting to anything that was said, I just want to clarify what he said was incorrect. As far as residential property, the property owner has a right to clear trees, but as far as on a commercial property, it would trigger anything more than 5,000 square feet of clearing a property, site plan review. But again, it's not an objection to what you're saying, just more of a clarification on his part.
Thanks, Scott.
May I speak to this again?
Sure.
Yeah, I do not object to the clearing of the trees, I just object to a blanket approval without any sense of account. You know, I think that this project should go forward. I just want to know how many trees we're taking down that are clearly written into the zoning bylaw as important.
Martha, when the bylaw was drafted, was it supplication that you would consider the amount, or does it say a little further on that you actually have to do a grid and count six-inch trees? Can you remember in this part of the bylaw? I don't know if I remember. I mean, I'm reading this in front of me. The application and co-applicant may be required to replace 100% of any and all trees with a six-inch or over that are removed from the project. So obviously, if mitigation was entertained, you'd want to know how many trees were there.
Right, but I think, as town council said, it's something that's at the board's discretion. It's may, so, you know, I think the consensus seems to be here that we're dealing with a situation that doesn't have old-growth trees. If we were in a location that had old-growth trees, you might well want to really inventory every single one of those.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, just to be clear also, you do have a finding that's, when you get to the findings, there is a finding that says the volume of cut and fill, the number of removed trees that are six inches or more in caliber, the area of wetland vegetation, displaced soil erosion, and threat of air-water pollution shall be held to a minimum set by the SPGA. So again, it talks about the six inches, but it says shall be held to a minimum. So if you, with your personal knowledge of the site from a site visit, understand that you're holding it to a minimum, or whatever, in accordance with all of the findings, you could do that as well. But it is specifically pointed out, both in the criteria as well as the findings.
Now, are those findings cumulative that you just said?
You have to make a, yes, it is cumulative, but you have to, you would have to make a positive finding on A through N.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, can I make one more point?
Sure.
We're not, we're not necessarily against inventorying the trees, that's not necessarily a heavy lift, but the challenge is that we're trying to thread a needle with this project and get it into a solar program where, you know, if we don't get it in, there's no obvious afterlife for this project. So if there are items where you're saying you're, you know, kind of regardless of what the results come back, you're in favor of it, then my, you know, I'm just asking for relief on that or flexibility on that, more from a timing perspective. I did want to present our decommissioning estimate, which I've sent by email, but this is stamped by a civil engineer, and our certificate of insurance as well.
Don't look at me for the answer right now. Damon has requested something of this site. Let's discuss it a little more, Damon. Do you still have that feeling that you would like a number? Because I don't have any problem in asking them to do that, if you would really like that. And then, because of, you know, it is zoned a little different, even though Kathleen mentioned that there would be a site plan review. Now, planning board people or town planner, would that site plan review ask for six-inch caliber? It would just ask for old-growth trees?
I, what I was, you know, what they're requiring is a site plan.
Kathleen, can you remember?
The only reason why I mention it was not to get back about the tree cutting, was just to correct something that he said was incorrect to you. As far as the tree cutting on the site plan review, we wouldn't be going through and asking for the six-inch diameter trees. It was just saying that, he said you, they had to do it by right to clear the property, and they don't. I wouldn't get fixated what I said on that, to bring you back to that conversation. I'm sorry if it confused you.
And Lisa, I think what you're saying, if I understand it, is the cutting of trees, the cuts and fills, this all kind of adds up to the impacts on the site?
That's right.
And that becomes, at that stage, critical for us to determine the trade-offs and decide what we're going to do with that?
Correct.
And I think then we have to look at it in depth and understand that that zoning is a little different, too. All right. You okay?
I think we can move forward.
All right. Before we really get to the next part, which I think will lend a little more clarity to, I'd like to ask Lisa and Martha on the operations and maintenance plan, did you have a chance to look at that at all, Martha? That's going to include, like, things of keeping the road plowed in the winter and stuff like that? Is that all those things we talk about?
It was a little bit, didn't quite have all the information that we were looking for. There's nothing in there specifically about how they plan to keep the roads cleared and that kind of thing, to maintain access, and that is one of the points that the planning board was concerned about for fire and emergency vehicles.
Okay. So we have 90 megawatts of solar projects installed in the Commonwealth, and we don't plow these sites in the winter unless we need to get in there. You can imagine, that would be an enormous expense across the portfolio of 90 megawatts if we had to keep all that plowed for no good reason. And the, I don't mean no good reason, but the, we have met with the fire and police chief, but, sorry, the point I was trying to make is the, one of the biggest appeal to a project like this, and we've said it, and to the neighbors, understand it, there's no traffic associated with this project after construction. There's a couple of people, a couple times a year, in pickup trucks servicing inverters, but there are no moving parts. You know, the, one of the reasons it works is that the O and M costs are very, very low. It's passive, it just kind of sits there, and, you know, we don't shovel the panels off after a snowstorm, we just let them naturally shed the snow and melt, and so we're not planning to plow the access roads again unless there's some reason that we need to get in there to fix an inverter or something like that.
I think that's actually pretty well answered, Joe, in some respects. I'm going to ask Lisa what her, you know, what she's found at other sites. I do think you ought to keep the site cleared enough of fallen trees or something, if a fire engine has to get in, that it's clear. What have you found about with snow removal at other sites, I mean?
I think it all, it all depends on the site and how long the access road is, and how close they are to other buildings, what the setback is to other structures.
Yep.
So that's it. I would only add one other thing, and I don't know that it's an issue, because the Conservation Commission may have already addressed it, but whether or not there's any stormwater structures or facilities that need to be maintained along the roadway on the way back, anything runoff? Because that's not, that's not in the O and M plan.
There's no proposed structures inside the arrays. No. Or a lot, there's no proposed along the roadways either. All the accesses to this site are existing.
And I guess for the chairs and maybe the board's edification, perhaps you could tell what, in your O and M plan, you talk about, like, a three-day response in the event that there's a call, unless there's an emergency. Maybe you want to describe what an emergency might be?
So, the system is monitored 24/7, not so much at night, because the sun's not out, but anytime there's an issue with the system, we, a number of people at our company receive an alert, and an emergency would be some sort of issue that affected public health or welfare. We would respond immediately. But if it were a few panels being down, you know, that might not warrant an immediate response. One thing, just from the fire perspective to consider, is that we can't have our arrays right up against tree lines because they shade the panels, so you always have a decent buffer around the fence. So any sort of, and electrical fires are extremely rare with solar, with DC direct current, but if there were an issue, you know, our expectation is that the fire department would mostly just let it sort of burn and contain it, rather than go in there and try and aggressively fight the fire. But again, extremely rare.
Remember, we're also working right now, for the audience that might be a little bit baffled by where we are, we're still working on some of the review criteria. We're going to be now heading into, after one more paragraph, we're going to be heading into some of the things that are deal breakers. And these are the things that, if you're worried now, we'll discuss afterwards, you know, and if people have questions when we head into the next part at that point, as we recognize each section, I'll recognize questions. Once again, this paragraph is the last paragraph in this section, and it deals with site condition suitability, and it talks about a few different things, and I don't know, and Lisa could correct me, too, but I look into some of the state thoughts on this. They like it on commercial industrial land, they like it on land that's somewhat disturbed, they like it on all these things, and I don't know, this looks pretty good for it. So, that's my thoughts. How about you guys?
Yeah, I think this is an ideal site for the plan. The only thing about operation and maintenance that I'd wanted to say, but they sat down, is on some sites, they have dry electrical extinguishers onsite as part of the plan, and I wasn't sure if that was something you guys would consider installing in case there is an electrical fire, very unlikely, but.
Now, Joe?
Yeah.
As you answer this question, because it's a question from Damon, remember, you probably could get this from our electrical inspector, too.
Sure. I suppose I just don't, it's not an area of expertise for me. It's not something that we have on our other projects, but we're open. I don't know what the cost impact is, that would be the only consideration, I think, from our perspective. We're open to it. Maybe, maybe we could wait to have that discussion with the electrical inspector, would be my suggestion.
Excuse me, everyone, I'm tying my shoes, because I'm stepping on them. Okay.
I just want to say, for the fire, I met with the fire chief.
Yep.
And I believe they're going to go out there with the forestry truck, and I think they have what you're talking about, those kind of chemical extinguishers.
Mm-hmm.
They discussed it, I'm not sure if they have it, but they knew what it was.
I think, Lisa, that, I don't know when we write this up, if we talk about writing, you know, how far, but I should imagine that we could also condition this to within reason to ask these guys to do what the electrical inspector expects of them.
Well, we would want, we would want to know that in advance, because we couldn't, we couldn't condition the decision on something that's open of that nature. So we'd want the electrical inspector to require it in advance, and there are facilities that Borrego's been involved in that include dry extinguishers at the inverter locations for ease of access for the fire department.
So give it up.
Jeff, can I explain something?
Sure.
Chuckie probably remembers this. It was a Saturday in the summer, and the air conditioner's running and everything else, and something happened out of the power lines over here, and they call it the Western Division, and the, somehow, the ground on the, when the two, two sides of the, what do they call it?
Paves.
Of the, of the, of the electricity crossed each other, it burnt the tops of the poles off, all the way to Haybrook, and it started, the first one was right at 90, at 95, where the, where the steel, big steel. where the, where the steel, big steel poles that carries the wire across ninety-five. I sent my son out there, and Doug Junior, and they didn't come back. So, I went up to see where they were, and what had happened was the cable had cut off, and there was electricity, a big round ball of electricity going into the ground. It was at least that, that big round, and it went on like that for a good three, four hours, until we could get it shut off. And that fire truck that they're talking about, they do have the powdered ancels, and that's what they did. All they're gonna do is try to put out the fire in the perimeter. But you're not gonna have the power that was going into that. You're not gonna, there's no way you're gonna have the power and the things that was happening over there. So, it has happened before, probably at a greater magnitude. We've had people climb the poles, electrocute themselves, things like this, and they've handled it. And it's not, it's not a problem. Here again, what you're proposing is not gonna, you know, don't be afraid of it because it's not, it's not gonna happen, it's just, you don't have the magnitude. I don't know, I can't say it anymore.
All right. We're heading into the part now, I think, that, you know, what we find here is really critical on decisions that we make going forth. And Lisa, if we find things that we don't have enough information and we want answers on, but we could, if we decided at the end of this, take a vote contingent on? At the, or do we need all the information?
You would, you'd want the information in order to be able to make your decision.
Beforehand. All right. So, the first one that my board needs to look very closely at, and the audience probably now should probably kind of sharpen their focus a little too, and help us decide what's best on some of these, because this will actually really, at least for us, condition what we're gonna do later on. All right? We're gonna look at number A. You got it in front of you guys? The proposed use and development will not have any substantial or undue adverse effect upon the adjacent property, the character of the area, the public health, safety, and general welfare. What does my board think of this site for a solar array? Does it, does it have detriment in any of those categories?
I can't remember this one, I think there's lighting at the...
I don't think it will.
Not in my mind.
I think I'm okay with it, too. Does anyone from the audience have any...
I mean, seeing as it's twenty-five years ago, there were thirty-eight hundred cars on it. I think...
Yeah, we can't hear that through the AC, just so you know.
All right, still can't hear me.
Are we still just talking about this middle road?
Oh, I, I forgot. I think you hear me, but you don't. We are still on Middle Road. Raise your hands like you did, because my voice will go down again because I'll forget. All right? What I just said was something that probably, maybe, when we go into the next one, will be something that you folks might focus on. It is, it is a very intrinsic part of us making our decisions tonight on this one and tonight on the other one if we do, or whatever. But it is, the proposed use and development will not have a substantial or undue adverse effect upon adjacent property, the character of the area, public health, safety, and general welfare. And my board thought about where that is, and we just talked about it, you probably couldn't hear us, and we didn't see any overt complications with that subject matter, that categories that we discussed. And if anyone from the audience would like to make a statement now, come to the microphone and feel free to do so. Go ahead.
I just want to make it very clear for everybody in the audience, though, as you ask these questions, they are very site-specific. Because you've asked us to think about it, right, as, as a prelude to when we have our next discussion. So, I'm just, you know, I'm sitting here, and I see everybody nodding, yeah, no problem, but I just want to make sure everybody understands, it is site-specific. At least, that's my really strong opinion.
I mean, I gotta be honest. It's site-specific, maybe because of the overlaying zoning, but I know there's neighbors involved, but if you, all of a sudden, don't care about cutting trees out there and all of a sudden care about cutting trees over there, you gotta really bring me into the picture. Because you can't have it all ways. But I'm just, you know, speaking to you in a fashion, so try to think broadly about everything. I do think industrial zoning has a little difference. Go ahead, Alicia.
I have another question, Alicia Greco, three Courtney Drive. When you say, speak up when we want to speak up, or withhold comment, do you want us to, because I, I see some question, I have some questions, but I'm withholding my comment until the end, so they could all be addressed at the same time, just for the sake of time. If you want me to speak as we go and have more like a debate, you need to make that clear. So, how do you guys want to, want to handle it?
I mean, it's a good, it's a good question. What do you think's the easiest way to handle some of this? Do it onsite now, or wait till the end?
Well, Mr. Chair, there's, as a special permit granting authority, every decision you make doesn't have precedent for the next decision. Because every site is different to your earlier point, even though the bylaw applies.
That corrects me, by the way.
And so, and so, you are dealing with the Middle Road site right now.
Yep.
And the discussion should be about that site.
Okay.
And so, if there are questions that the board has concerning this, for example, and I just wanna, and I've heard what the board has to say, but I think it's important because the planning board memo brings up the fact that there's no, there's an issue about lighting, and there wasn't really a discussion. But it's, I'm not clear whether or not this site has any lighting or not, which may or may not have, and the presentation this evening didn't address that. So, perhaps they should address that, and perhaps they should address the issue of screening and clearing on this site, so that it's clear for the board to understand as it makes its finding regarding this particular issue on this site.
Could everyone hear that out there, pretty much? All right, so...
So, is it fair to say that we get to keep this discussion focused on the Middle Road site?
Yes, yes.
And then we'll start all over again for the, the next, okay, so, thank you. I'm just gonna fix this, because when I'm watching on TV, and I can't hear people, it drives me crazy, so, that's all.
All right. So, everyone okay? Oh, go ahead, Steve.
I can address the lighting. I meant to do that, and I didn't.
What was the second part of Lisa's statement?
And screening.
Right.
Screening also. This site is, has an existing buffer around the entire, all the arrays, really. And it sits back quite a distance off the road. Even along Route One here, there's existing vegetation that would screen it from anybody traveling along Route One. So, I think this site is pretty well screened. And for the lighting, on these sites, there will only be lights at the equipment pad areas, and there will be motion sensors.
Now, is the equipment pad the inverter building?
Yeah, well, there's no building there. It's an inverter, that's it. And a transformer will be there. And there's only, it's a security light, really, that, it's motion sensor. So, if something moves, it'll go on, and five minutes later, it'll go off. And so, ninety-nine percent of the time, it's off. But I have a picture of what they look like at an equipment pad area.
Tracy, can we shut the air conditioner off or get too hot?
It gets very hot.
All right, all right.
So, you can see, they're just mounted on a pole. It's downlighting, it's a spotlight.
It's minimal.
It's minimal, yep.
Yes. Oh, yes. Those are usually good questions.
This is a question that I had posed to Steve previously, because he's, he's explained about the lighting to the planning board and the conservation commission. But since these are motion detectors, and this is in a natural environment, is this a situation where the lights are gonna be going on and off all the time? How sensitive are they?
I haven't heard of any complaints, and these lights are about eight feet high, mounted about eight feet high, so they're actually below. The panels are about ten feet at the top and two and a half feet at the bottom. So, the panels pretty much block them. I, I don't think you'd be able to see when they went on and off from surrounding residences.
Okay to move on? Joe, want to add to that?
Oh, definitively, you won't be able to see these lights from anywhere. Three inverter pad locations, they're all like well away. There's no inverter pad in the one array near Route One, so they're way interior to the site, and no one, including the landowner closest to the site, would ever see the lights.
Do they go on and off to the left though?
No, like, like Steve said, we've, in all our projects, like, we've never had people complain. I know, I just installed motion sensors at my house, that you can adjust the sensitivity. So, if there was a complaint that a squirrel was setting it off, and you had this pesky squirrel going through the site all the time, you could adjust the sensitivity, and we'd be happy to do that. We'd be happy to have it be a condition of the permit.
All right. Moving on to B. The nature and intensity of the intended operations will not discourage the appropriate development and use of adjacent land and buildings, nor impair the value thereof. Where'd Damon go? So, that's to you guys. I think you've got to kind of remember, Chuck, you on the sidewalk?
I did.
Yeah, you got, and, and Mike, you know that land anyway.
Right.
That was Al Goldberg's junkyard. It had way into thirty-five hundred cars on it.
Thirty-eight, yep.
It was reclaimed over the years, and it certainly is disturbed land, like, and I don't, at least for me, speaking as chair, I don't, I can't foresee that it is, that it's gonna discourage any appropriate development. I don't see any injurious effect, just because of the location of where, where it is. I don't know about you guys.
I agree with you.
All right. Where'd Damon go? Okay. Now, this is something we ought to discuss a little bit. All proposed traffic accessways shall be, yes, Alyssa, what? Yep, we can do that. Yep, good thought, good thought. You're welcome. What do you want to talk about, Alyssa? Talk about how well you can hear back there?
Now we can hear you.
Yeah. Damon here, everything was silent without you. All right. So, we were Damon with B. Nature intensity of intended operations will not discourage appropriate development and use of adjacent land and buildings, not impair the value thereof. Used to be a junkyard, you've been there.
Yep.
Yep, all right.
It'll be better now.
Yep.
This is proofed.
Now, C could have some thinking, guys, especially during construction or whatever, so focus on this. All proposed traffic accessways shall be adequate, but not excessive, in number adequate and width grade alignment, visibility sufficient, separated from street net intersections and places of public assembly, and shall meet similar safety considerations. So, I don't want to be the one always talking. What do you think? Now, my only thinking is that might be relatively benign during the operation of the solar installation, but you've got a lot of construction going on. Now, I have another question for you guys now. And I know you discussed it, but I forget. Are there any piles, are there any pile driving? Is it screwed in the ground? Is it concrete? How many trucks in and out, and all those things? I don't know if that's anywhere been illuminated for us.
Yeah, I think the planning board letter asked for information about that as well. Some letter I received recently.
Want to take those one by one? We'll take the first one. How are the panels attached to the ground?
So, the plan is to use a TerraSmart ground screw, which is literally a screw that's about this tall, and it's a simple machine. Is it a Bobcat that they use, or? Similar to a Bobcat, small machine. One operator is out there screwing the screws into the ground. The more traditional way to do it is with the vibratory pile. But in New England, as many of you know, there's ton, you know, there's significant amount of boulders and bedrock, and you never kind of know, even if you have a great geotechnical report, which has come up during different meetings, you know, why don't you have a geotechnical report? Well, there's two reasons. Number one, we put that, we do do a geotechnical report, but we do it just before we start construction, just to verify. But we don't want to spend the money before we're permitted. But the second reason, and the more important reason, is because we're using a ground screw, which can literally go into anything. So, if you do have bedrock or boulders, then you simply pre-drill, and the screw will go right into the ground. So, we're using ground screws on almost all of our New England projects, except when you have extremely sandy soils.
Now, the second part of that question was, what can we expect for traffic in and out of the site during construction?
Sure. So, it's about a four-month construction period, and the deliveries are staged. So, we'll go in in the first three weeks and do the site work, some limited grading, and prep the site. All the erosion controls will obviously be in place at that point. And then, the racking and ground screws will arrive onsite. The civil contractor will put in the ground screws. And then, in Massachusetts, you need licensed electricians to do the balance of the work. So, we'll have licensed electricians constructing the racks, installing the panels. So, the panels show up on an eighteen-wheeler, there'll be a couple of deliveries. And usually, we try to arrange it so you have an eighteen-wheeler come in, drop off, and then we work to get all of those modules installed. And then we have, you know, days later, we have the next delivery come in. So, it's all kind of staged and spread out, rather than, you know, all the equipment showing up at once and being stockpiled at the site. We try not to do it that way.
Everything will be offloaded onsite, not on the street, correct?
That's right. Yep. Staging area.
Go ahead, John.
I have a question, but...
Bill, the, the ground screw you referred to, are these essentially chance anchors? A couple of three at most, helices at the bottom, ten-inch diameter? Powered, and the capacity is a function of the back pressure on the hydraulic system of the Bobcat? Am I, is that, am I paraphrasing you correctly, or is this something I've never heard of?
They're a lot smaller. They're only about two and a half inch diameter.
Okay.
And it's a giant screw, and then...
Wait a second. The, the screw is this diameter? Okay. Not this diameter, it's this diameter? Eight feet long?
Yep, but they only stick up probably ten inches above the ground.
Okay. That wasn't my concern. My concern was, and I don't have any argument with you, because I'm not familiar with what you're saying, but what I described as a chance anchor, there's nowhere in the world that's gonna go through anything. that's going to go through anything, not even close. I mean, they will bounce right off a ledge underneath or a boulder or whatever and bend. These may, I don't have, I don't have any knowledge of them.
Thank you.
Steve? Steve Fram, 21 Forest Street. Upon decommissioning, do all these screws come out of the ground?
Yes.
Thank you.
So, there's a decommissioning bond or a letter of credit that will be in place, which is a condition of the special permit, which we've agreed to, and that'll be in place starting before construction. So, the money's there, it can't be touched, and at the end of 20 years, we either extend in five-year periods, or there's a restore, remove and restore provision in the lease where everything has to be removed, and again, that letter of credit or bond is in place in the event that the company's insolvent or some other issue related to that. Before we sit down again, just, you explained how many trucks you expected to be delivering the panels and how that would be spaced out, but you didn't talk about how many people would be coming to do the groundwork, what sort of equipment you're bringing, and not that I expect any of this is going to be a problem, but just so we have a full answer on that. Yeah, at maximum, there might be 40 people working at the site on a particularly busy day. Really, the, we try to not overlap the trades too much, so the project is really civil, and then, you know, the electrical subcontractor handles, you know, once the trenching is done and the ground screws are in, then the electrical contractor takes over, and a lot of times, it might be about a dozen people on site, but if they're up against a deadline, they might bring in a larger crew to accelerate the process. But there's a nice, natural staging area right here, so you have an existing access road, this is already here, and then you have a big field right here, so there'll be a job trailer with temporary electricity and, you know, daily safety meetings and, yeah. I don't know if I answered your question, but... Yeah, I just wanted to, since we have to look at the volume of traffic. Traffic, yeah. Getting a sense of what it actually is. Yeah. Is required to answer that question. Yep.
And I think what Damon was asking is if there's 40 people there unless they're arriving, three in a truck, you know, there's some traffic, but this site certainly has no problem handling, that's through the middle road up into the field, where the parking is in that field. And that blends into C, which really takes care of a lot of those same concerns that you had, that we just discussed and Joe discussed. It almost handles a lot of D too, but I'll read D. "Adequate, safe and accessible off-street parking and loading spaces shall be provided to avoid parking in public ways of vehicles belonging to the persons connected with a visiting site, including a minimum parking for three trucks and two automobiles." At this site, big fields.
Are they shown on the site plan, the parking areas and loading areas as required by the bylaw?
Can you answer that question, Steve?
There's no real parking area shown, but there's areas for parking. I mean, you could, here, you could park. If someone came to the site after construction, that's where they'd park. During construction, it's temporary, there wouldn't be assigned parking spaces.
So, here's the...
But there's room to park.
You have the requirements in the bylaw, right? The board has to find that there's adequate parking, so you can say, oh, yeah, they can park anywhere, they can go under a solar panel, they can do whatever they want. You should actually show it on the site plan so that it's clear that the board has the reason upon which to find your positive finding.
Well, at each, at each location of the electrical pad, the equipment pad, there's adequate parking for one truck, which is what you'd need at each site.
Well, actually, the bylaw requires three trucks and two automobiles.
There's still adequate parking.
But I'm just...
Yeah.
Look, I'm not the applicant, I'm just telling you what the bylaw requires and the board needs to follow.
Well, for these sites, I mean, we wouldn't even need that many. I mean, if that's a specific requirement, do we need to show them if we don't need? We'll never use those spaces.
Yeah, but, all right, now, listen, okay, because this is the first time we've vetted the bylaw. Lisa's been over there writing down all the things that need clarification. I know this board, or at least this chair, is going to look to her. If there's an overwhelming amount of clarification needed, what do you think's going to happen? So, it behooves you guys to be as clear as possible. To me, if I understand that site, if Tommy hasn't got something planted there or something, you're going to be driving up that access road and probably parking things and staging things in that big field, right?
During construction, yeah.
That's a big place.
Right.
All right, so the construction part is taken care of. Lisa, are you asking the three trucks and two automobiles for when it is up and running?
Yeah.
So, we need to know that, because the bylaw says that. In other words, what I'm saying to you guys is, that was my fear all along. I don't have any angst about solar arrays, I have angst about satisfying this bylaw, and I know there are parts of it that you felt we might be able to have relief from. It doesn't seem that there's like, let's say, relief that is formal, so if it's asking for these things, we should do what the bylaw asks for from now on in. All right, because you know, there's going to be places up there when you maintain that road where you can park three trucks and two cars, so just show us.
Yeah, there's adequate space near the equipment areas, where you'd have adequate space for that amount of parking, and you wouldn't really need it for this site, but there's adequate space for them.
I think all we're asking is that you just draw it on the plan and say, here's our parking spot.
That can positively be added to the plan.
But we won't have to put in a necessary...
Right.
That's our concern.
What?
We're happy to show it. We just are saying we don't need the parking spots, we just don't want to have to put in a parking spot if we don't need one, I guess.
But you know, if the bylaw...
If you, if you think we need one, then I'm open to that.
Right. Yeah, I can hear Alyssa.
It's, it's...
The bylaw is telling you to do that.
Right.
I'm not saying you don't have to do that, so I hope as we proceed further, you haven't decided you're not going to do a lot of things that the bylaw doesn't ask you to do, because we're not going to get too far.
Not at all. Not at all. But I think Lisa said earlier in the meeting that it's not necessarily a requirement, it's something that has to be addressed, and so can we have a conversation about certain things that maybe you would agree that they shouldn't be required?
Mr. Chair, if I could?
Yep.
I was commenting on the language of the bylaw concerning the six-caliper trees, where it says the board may require 100% mitigation. This does not say that. This says you need to have parking in the manner in which it requires. If you don't have it, they can't make the finding. It doesn't say you have to have a paved parking lot, it doesn't say it has to have yellow striping, it doesn't say it has to have handicap accessibility, it says you have to have certain parking, that's all it says.
The only reason is, is that word shell.
Jeff?
Go ahead, Steve. Go ahead. Can I bring that up? Go ahead. It's, we're two hours into this, and we're not even halfway through the Middle Street project. It looks like we're the ones that have been promoting the project, and our town council represents the town. Do you have an attorney that represents you? Is he here? No. Okay. I think what we're doing, you should be doing, and are your attorney, and you meet with our town administrator, and you meet with our town council, and answer all these questions, so that when we, when we come back to this hearing, you're going to tell us, that you're going to show us that all this has been done, because we, I don't like the way this is going. It shouldn't be going like this.
Jeff, could I make a recommendation?
Who are you?
Kathleen Pearson, Planning Board. I don't know if this would work in this situation, but in the past, when we have applications and for some reason, they did not want to meet those requirements, they would actually state why and justify it, but they wouldn't ignore the requirement, like it didn't exist. You actually have to address it. So, what she said was, if it's in the requirements, you do what's been told, and if there is a reason why you can't, then you put a specific line stating why and describe it. That's all I'd say.
Kathleen, for everyone in the audience, I, you know, what stuck out for me was, and Lisa noted it, there was a may on the other one and there's a shall on this one, so that means you've got to do it.
Sure.
Did we finish that up enough? "Adequate access to each structure for fire and emergency service equipment to be provided. The project shall be provided to the Fire and Police Department." I don't have any, I mean, I, Billy said it's fine. And I had, Mike still here? No, other Mike. I haven't heard really from Mike. I think you need to get those things saying they're okay. All right? And I don't have them yet.
You're looking for something in writing?
That's kind of what this says. You can't, you can't make this just like the plan, though. Go ahead.
I, I think that they've made it very clear. We, like Mike said, this can go on for hours if it continues like this, hours.
We're not even going to get to the other part.
So, that's going to be, before we even take a vote, that's contingent on having that. Is there a different way to state it?
No, it's pretty clear. Could I just...
Yep, go ahead, Jen.
It doesn't say in writing, I just, because I want to follow the bylaw.
Yep.
But you're now saying that you want that in writing.
Want what in writing? It says, it says, "shall be provided to the Fire Department, Police Department."
So, that's what I'm thinking.
It doesn't have anything, you know, that they have it or not, we don't know what they're doing.
Right, but you, what I'm just going to clarify is, that's saying they need to give it to me, that says they need to give it to the Fire Department.
Absolutely.
Now, you want the Fire Department to give it to you?
No.
Or you want them to get it?
I just don't know that there's been done.
You want to CC them if they give it to the Fire Department?
Don't know it's been done. So... All right? Go ahead.
Bill Tru with, I'm at 150 Main Street. When it comes to the Fire Department, there are several building codes and things that they need to follow when you put in a solar power system, whether it's a small residential or a large solar array like this. In this case, there's NFPA, or National Fire Protection Association, document that they need to read and look at it and compare it to this project, and this is applicable to both. And it's referred to as the firefighter safety and emergency response for solar power systems. So, that's one of several codes that we could look at that have to be complied with to put these solar farms in. So, I'd recommend that they read through that guide, look at it compared to this project, and make sure that they're all covered.
Now, when you say those codes, is that codes from mass general law? What code? Where are we?
The National Fire Protection Association has a combination of standards.
Yep.
Procedures, and things that have been adopted as code.
Yep.
Including NFPA 70, NFPA 101, NFPA 1, and NEC Article 690 is very particular about solar farms, and everything in there, as far as I'm concerned, has to be complied with. Back on an earlier subject, these solar farms, they put out thousands of arrays, and those arrays can lift up off the ground during high storms. So, there's things like, what is the uplift rating of the structure they're putting in? What is the wind rating of the farm? Because you can have unusual storms around here, you have open land, and so there's many, many technical issues that have to be, in my mind, tackled to approve a project like this, far beyond what the bylaws are going to be able to manage.
I would just say that that is part of the building permit application process, and that certainly everything he mentioned is, you know, these plans get stamped by licensed civil engineers, licensed structural engineers, so when we submit a building permit application, it'll be a building permit, complete design set, several pages, with stamped by professional engineers who are putting their licenses on the line. They're certainly looking at uplift and snow loading and all of the other considerations, and we design to the CAL FIRE standard, which is the highest FIRE standard in the US, so I just thought I'd mention that.
And we're going to get some information from the chief and the police department, because that's what we do, anyway, in this, it'll come back to us. "The entire project site shall be screened at all seasons of the year from view of adjacent residential lots, streets, roadways, and the general landscapes of the site shall be in character that generally prevail in the neighborhood." Does my board have any issues with that?
Could I just go over that?
G. Uh, no. I'll go back. Thanks. Are we okay on G?
Yep.
Thanks, Jen. "The proposed use and development will not result in the destruction, loss, or damage of any natural, scenic, or historic features of significant importance."
I don't think the junkyard was historically important.
I know that junkyard well. All right. The volume, Lisa had alluded to this before, the volume of cut and fill, the number of removal of trees that are six inches or more in caliper, the area of wetland vegetation displacement, soil erosion, soil erosion, and the threat of air and water pollution shall be held to a minimum set by the Special Granting Permit Granting Authority after consultation with the Conservation Commission. I think that's, in some respects, ongoing right now. I think, and I want to have people from my board talk, we've certainly addressed screening at this site, and that screening probably has been addressed in maybe somewhat of an all year round. You know, it's been looked at in an all-year-round way. What else in there that is within our purview that isn't going to the Concom that my board might have a statement about?
Well, as already discussed, I'd like to know how many trees we're cutting of that dimension.
Yep.
So that if we want to do any mediation, we can ask for that. Tracy, in our earlier meeting, had mentioned the possibility of donating to our tree planting fund, but we can't, we just can't judge the scale of the trees cut until we, you know, it may be that only two trees are significant, and I'd say, oh, the hell with it, you know? There are a lot of scrubby trees on there, but I feel we have a better sense, I'm uncomfortable with the idea of just walking away from it.
You know, hold that thought, we'll discuss it when, Alyssa?
I, Alyssa, I'll let you back over and drop. I want to just talk of the trees for a minute, because I think people are forgetting the fact that trees do provide a significant source of clean, clean air. They clean the air, they provide CO2, they suck up CO2, provide oxygen, and to minimize the effect of trees in the environment, I think, does a huge disservice. And I have just a little bit of information here from the Alliance for Community Trees.
the Alliance for Community Trees in Washington DC, which is, one of their roles is an advocacy group for trees. And I'm not going to go through this whole thing, but trees, trees reduce stormwater and runoff. A forest can reduce annual stormwater runoff by two to seven percent, and a mature tree can store 50 to 100 gallons of water during a large storm. They improve air, air quality. Trees clean the air by absorbing carbon dioxide, sulfur dioxide, nitrous oxides, and other pollutants. And they reduce ozone emissions from vehicles. They improve water and soil quality. Trees and other plants help remediate soils and landfills and other contaminated sites by absorbing, transforming, and containing a number of contaminants. There are public health benefits to trees. There's a noise reduction. Trees reduce noise pollution by absorbing sounds. A belt of trees 98 feet wide and 49 feet tall can reduce highway noise by six to 10 decibels. Planting noise buffers composed of trees and shrubs can reduce 50% of noise to the human ear. Each year, an acre of trees absorbs enough, absorbs the amount of carbon produced by driving a car for 26,000 miles. So when you think about swapping green energy for green, for green energy, you have to think about the significant roles that trees play. And in one year, one tree cools like 10 air conditioners running annually continuously. They absorb 750 gallons of stormwater, and they filter 60 pounds of pollutants from the, from the air. So to just assume that we're switching one green for one green, you're, you're really not. You're, there is a trade, a trade-off there. I just want the board to be aware of that. Thank you.
Lisa, back to the idea of the number of six-inch trees. When you looked at the bylaw, I know it's held in an advocate of consideration on, you know, basically where we are right now. But does it say that they shall give us that number anywhere in here? It's that "may" thing, right?
Right. And it's the "may" thing, and the question for the board is, and only the board can decide, is if they have enough information in order to make a finding under here.
Right.
So that's the question for the board.
Especially that finding comes up against when you put it, you know, against soil erosion, air and water pollution.
Right.
And how, you know, those things come together.
Right.
So I think, Damon, on this site, if you want to ask them to go count the trees, I'll tell them to go count the trees. But I think maybe in some respects, we have to maybe as a board decide, you know, where it is in industrial and commercial. And I can't remember what those trees were.
Excuse me, can I say no?
No. No. I'm running out. Do you want, do you, do you feel strongly?
I'd like to count. But, you know.
Don't be afraid if you want to count.
That's, that is my preference. Before making a mitigation, I feel like there needs to be, I need to know what I'm mitigating, or failing to mitigate.
Okay. What do you do, Chuck? All right.
Yeah, I'll agree with that.
Yep.
Yep, here we go.
Okay.
It's in the bylaw.
Yep.
You know, we should.
That won't, or might not. We'll discuss how we end up with that. But I think, I think with people where the board seems to be locking up is, and Lisa was ahead of all this because of correlating the trees with this part of the bylaw, where this part of the bylaw reads, "The volume in cut and fill, the number of removed trees that are six inches or more in caliper, the area of wetland vegetation displaced, soil erosion, and threat of air and water shall be held to a minimum." I guess if we don't know the number of six-inch trees, we won't know how to hold that to a minimum set. Now... That's almost locks it down, doesn't it? Do we have to have that as we progress to the very end of this? If we don't have that, we can't make a determination.
Well, no, you already have a number of outstanding items. You can't make a determination tonight, anyway, because you have a number of outstanding items that they have to provide to you in any event.
All right. So let's continue.
Let me read this one.
No, it's good. I get it. "Adequate provisions shall be provided for stormwater management and other utilities consistent with the function requirements of the Newbury Stormwater Rules and Regulations, Department of Environmental Protection, and Massachusetts Stormwater Management Handbook." John, is the Concom dealing with that at a, just go up to the microphone if you can? And the reason I ask that is, it's a pretty hefty document, stormwater management document.
Right.
And if we needed to get, you know, additional engineering, we could ask for it or something, you know? I mean, can you, you guys can handle that at the Concom. That's good.
Well, the Concom has already voted to issue an order of conditions. And implicit in that is that we are happy with the stormwater calc they gave us and the, it's a site that I don't think there's any of us on the Concom who are concerned about that was going to cause any trouble for anybody.
All right, good.
Now, certainly a consultant, I'd be delighted to have a consultant look at it because I'd personally, because I'd learned something from it. But, you know, is it necessary? I don't think so.
All right. Obstruction of scenic views from publicly accessible locations shall be minimized. I think, you okay?
We're okay with that.
"Gler from the site lighting shall be minimal." You guys talked about that.
Yeah.
It's basically shaded by the height of the... "Sound impacts from transformers, inverters, and other electrical equipment shall be mitigated with use of enclosures, shielding, and placement of sound-generated equipment on the site." Maybe explain to us how you would answer that, by how much noise these things make, what screening you have, what have you done out there? Because I did see that they were just little boxes in the open. So explain to me. I mean, this one, obviously, has got a lot of room around it.
This one does have a lot of room. And we have something that I was going to submit to the board that has the actual noise that the inverters put out. And I know there's the member who's not here is probably the one who would look at it and understand it. But we located the equipment areas in the center of the arrays, pretty much. And they're going to be buffered by trees here and space. I mean, the distance from any residence is probably the biggest thing for the noise. And these can be located pretty far back into the site. And this one, the third ray here, I don't think there's any residences around that one.
Now, was that information that you sent to us like two or three days ago, or was it in this last bunch of information?
Yesterday.
Was this yesterday?
Ian Berger information?
This is yesterday. So David, if you're listening, look at this stuff.
He is.
He is listening.
All right. Is there any screening around these things? No? Could there be screening if the noise was, and would that screening condition the noise if it wasn't that there was a lot of room? But I mean, if we had to have screening around these things, at one point, would it minimize the noise? I mean, I'm not...
You're talking about trees?
I'm talking almost, no, I'm talking almost hypothetically. Would a fence minimize the noise or something?
Oh, no. Trees and fences and things like that don't minimize the noise.
What's, what's the closest receptor to an inverter?
I think this, this house, which is the landowner's son to this inverter here. I don't...
And how far is that?
500 feet.
So do you know what the acoustical result is of the inverter to that close receptor?
What, so this is a study that we've provided the board, the Massachusetts Clean Energy Center. And they found that from a distance of, they studied an array from a distance of 50 to 150 feet in that range, there was no noticeable noise as compared to background noise.
On what, on general sites or on this particular site?
On a specific site.
Not this site?
Not this. No, they didn't say this.
Why did they put background noise in? Because there is noise, but it's not...
It's not, it's so low that it's not, it's not distinguishable from general background noise.
The state law requires that you can't increase the ambient, the noise levels above 10 dB ambient. And the ambient includes the background noise. So David probably is going to give you more information on this, but that's why they use background and ambient. And they're not allowed to include, increase the noise above that, 10 decibels.
Okay. Okay?
Yep.
"Unreasonable departure from character materials and scale of buildings in the vicinity is viewed from public ways. Places shall be minimized." It's almost the scenic view thing. Any problem with that, guys?
None.
"The proposed development of the site shall be in compliance with the provision of Newbury's bylaws, including parking signs, landscaping, environmental standards, and other pertinent sections." They get into a little later, you guys get into some of the signage, and you're not going to use much signage, right? So...
Mr. Chair, the decommissioning bond would fall under that, and their decommissioning estimate doesn't include the requirements in Section 14C, I believe it is.
Well, I mean, for us to even go a little further, Lisa?
Right.
I mean, don't we have to really understand more of where Tracy is in the financial side of it, too? And...
Right. But what I'm suggesting, they're going to need to bring it back to you. So what another item that's outstanding is that the financial surety, the estimate they provided to you, does not meet the requirements of the bylaw in Section 14C.
Yep.
Which requires them to put, to add the inflation factor, as well as, there's another factor in there that you do not use, and you don't include the cost of revegetation. And you don't specify the removal of the screws.
Now, if we go, oops.
We need to include a 2.5% inflation factor, but I think...
Before we, before we get to that, let me ask this question. And then, Lisa, without, with kind of leaving that and not looking at the final action part.
Right.
Are we going to go over operation and maintenance plan control and everything else? Are we going to leave it to what Martha and everyone, and you looked at? I mean, are we okay with that, or should we be going over that?
Well, I think that the applicant has heard what the shortcomings are, and perhaps you could continue it to the next meeting and require them to provide the information at least seven days in advance, so you have an opportunity to review it prior to the next meeting.
I agree.
All right. And especially, but my question was a little bit before that, in the bylaw, with the density requirements.
Right.
I mean, Martha, are we leaving that to you?
The setbacks and the height requirements and all of that.
When you proved it, it's kind of okay, right?
Right.
So we don't really have to go over that?
No.
So after doing what we've just done now, we could jump to what you talked about, which was the 14A.
Right.
Abandonment and decommissioning.
Correct.
Should we jump to it and go over it?
I mean...
Or is it not?
It's, it, they have a, they have a, first of all, we'll make it, those specific requirements, and we'll make conditions of any special permit if the board decides to grant it. Secondly, their estimate needs to be provided and updated. And then we would make, they're not required to actually provide the bond until 30 days after the granting of the special permit in any event. So we can make it a condition of that, but they would need to show you the proper numbers prior to approving it.
Right.
So you don't need to review it? No, sir?
Because we don't have, we don't have that ability to know the numbers, to ask them for that financial surety of bond.
Correct. Not yet.
All right. So, hello there.
One more, one more issue on this subject. Sorry. As, as I recall, the requirement for the estimate was it to be prepared by a professional estimator. What I saw was on Borrego's letterhead, which doesn't give me any assurance that it was so performed. I would like to see personally, if the data provided in summary form on the letterhead of a professional estimator, and enough background backup information. I mean, a job like this would, it'd be 30 pages of backup. You know, I kind of like to see, and we don't need 30 copies of it, but something we can have a look and see if we agree or disagree with the numbers. We got 9,000, $57,000, was it, a round figure?
Forty-seven.
Forty-seven, and we've got 9,000 arrays, units, right?
Seven thousand.
Pardon me?
Seven, I believe.
So you're saying that's...
Seventy-seven, seventy-seven solar panels for this site, and 40,995 was the estimate.
On the other one, I'm thinking of the other site, yeah. The dollars per, for array are not very large.
Forty-one cents a panel to remove.
You made my point.
All right. And what John is alluding to for the audience, because you probably don't have these documents in front of you, is, and he's dead on, the applicant and any co-applicant together are owners are as above described. As the case may be, shall submit a fully inclusive estimate, sets then estimate costs as prepared, that's shall present, as prepared by a professional estimator reasonably acceptable to the town. So, that being said, at least I've reached a point in this, and my board, I think you need to make what you feel noted. But Lisa, you kind of wrote down what you have and can pass on to Joe and Steve?
Yes.
And can you just read some of them as to why we should probably continue this public hearing till, what's the next date, Tracy? This is...
September 9th.
September 9th.
Okay, I'll be there.
The mic's not available on that day.
Should we try to schedule another, where are you going for? How long?
I won't be back. I'm leaving the 30th. I'll be away two weeks. So, so, what, the 60th of September, somewhere after that.
So on this one, if David still signs, he could still vote, right, Lisa?
Yes.
You could still get the four members? So I should think we would proceed with the same selectmen's date? Does that make sense?
That's, that's up to the board.
Does that make sense, guys?
So you just want to proceed to the next meeting?
Well...
Without mic?
Because David will have signed a certificate and be back, and he can vote.
Yep.
So I think these are the, it would be the same if it was a three-member board. I mean, it's just that this is what the super majority does. Vote. It has to be four out of five. Lisa, what were the words that you had and some of the reasons why we would continue the public hearing? Till, what's the next date, Tracy?
September 9th.
If you want to remember.
September 9th.
September 9th. What was some of the...
For the applicant to provide the outstanding information a week in advance of the meeting? Did you go over some of the items, or no?
She'll get them all to you for sure.
I'll get them all to Joe.
All right. So I'd entertain a motion from the board. How's this? Is this, Martha, is this the letter from your board?
Yes, and that's my question. A lot of the points have been addressed. Do you want me to read the ones that haven't been addressed?
Yes, please.
Okay. There were some...
Very good.
Some general comments for, that pertain to both sites. And the first one was that the board recommends that no special permit be granted until the financial arrangement between the town and Borrego for each project is finalized to the satisfaction of the to the satisfaction of the town administrator. The next one, that was more information should be included in the O and M plan, that's been discussed. The surety's been discussed. Liability insurance, that was submitted this afternoon, a certificate of insurance. Open space and agricultural impact report, that was discussed today. Screening of the site was discussed. The access roadways maintenance was discussed. I'm still, I would like to hear Chief Pearson and Chief Riley's comments about keeping the roadways clear during the winter. The board also reaffirms that the applicant should provide letters from the fire chief and the police chief regarding their, that they've reviewed the applications and have no concerns. John O'Connell mentioned having the decommissioning estimates done by a professional cost estimator. One thing that wasn't discussed tonight, the requirement regarding security fencing is that it should be black vinyl coated chain link, a minimum of eight feet high. The detail on the drawing shows a six-foot-high chain link fence with one foot of barbed wire on top. So there's a-
That's six inches off the ground though, right, To?
And six inches off the ground, which actually isn't shown on the drawings, although they've described that. And I just wanted to note that the revised plans that were submitted on August eleventh, which are dated August eighth, do show grading for both projects, because there were some questions about that. But they don't, they don't really show planting, including screening and site lighting. The plan that was delivered tonight did show, indicate screening for the Courtney Drive. Middle Road, we've already discussed the trees. There was a concern raised by the board about runoff from the gravel access roads onto Middle Road or the other, the other abutting roads. I think the Conservation Commission feels that that's been addressed. Stormwater runoff from the roads, from the gravel access, you think that's been-
I can't find a problem there.
Okay. Vehicle trips was discussed. And one other question was that they, they are proposing to use the existing access off of Route one onto the site. It's currently a gated, a gated access. And Steve had said that he's discussed that with the state DOT who has approved using that. But again, I think that would be something good to have in mind. That that discussion is actually taking place.
Thank you, Martha. All right.
Table this to the next one.
Are you listening to it loud?
Continue it, continue.
Continue, continue.
Sorry, I would move to continue this hearing until September ninth at, at seven thirty?
Good. Any discussion? All those in favor?
All right. Wow.
We're going to take eight. Three-minute break.
Hmm.
Maybe not, I don't know.
Well, hopefully they'll-
Open the second part of the public hearing. Oh, we're going to move to the second part of the public hearing.
You can open.
Open it.
And read the ad.
And we're gonna read the public notice. Hold it, I'll find it, where'd it go? Where, Michael, where's Kathy, you got it over there? Yeah, but where's the packet is what I'm asking for. Wow, stuff disappears.
Do you want mine, Joe?
Yes.
You stole it.
All right, hold on. Oh, good grief. Okay, hold on to that, too, I don't need it. Yep. Public notice.
Notice is hereby given that the Board of Selectmen as agents of the Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing Tuesday, August 26, 2014, at 8:00 PM at the Newbury Town Hall, 25 High Road, Newbury, Mass. On the application of Steve Long, say the name again. Borrego. Borrego Solar Systems, Inc., 1115 Westford Street, 2nd Floor Lowell, Mass. 01851. Applicant seeks a special permit for relief from Section 97-5 F2C of the Newbury zoning bylaws for the construction of a 2.795 MW DC STC rated ground-mounted solar array on property located at 136 Main Street, Assessor's map, R41-0-42A, R41-0-42B, R41-0-42, and R42-0-13. As the proposed construction is use of a scale that requires approval in the form of a special permit from the Board of Selectmen, all interested parties should attend the hearing, a copy of the application is available for review at the office of the Selectmen. Newbury Board of Selectmen.
Also, as at the last solar array public hearing, the same conditions and information I provided in the beginning in recognizing the team also recognizes that the same people are here and the same team is here, and will also give it just as much wonderful, long-lasting attention as we gave the last one. Also, I am going to change some of the process in the respect to, the public hearing is open, we've read public notice, we are going to ask for those to speak in favor, should we ask for presentation first? All right, what we're gonna do is we're gonna ask for the presentation on this site. We're gonna ask for everyone in favor speaking, in favor of it, to go to the microphone, give name and address and speak for it. After that, we're gonna ask for everyone who is opposed to the application at this site, they may get up, state their name and address, and make a presentation or speak to the issues. At the end of that, we are gonna continue the meeting to the 9th of September. So, that being said, we're ready for the presentation. From you guys, Mr. Borrego.
Steve Long again, from Borrego, and I'll do a brief presentation for our other site, which is off Main Street. Main Street is located here, it's also Route 95 is located here, and Courtney Drive is located here. This project will be on four separate parcels owned by the S.Air family. This parcel here has a residence on it, this parcel, another residence, this parcel has nothing on it currently, it's a large parcel, and there's another parcel here which abuts Route 95. Access to the site will be from Main Street via an existing driveway, and then there'll be an access drive off the existing driveway, back through the property, along an existing cart path, back through, crossing a wetland here, which is being looked at by the Conservation Commission, to the array here, which is located on two large properties. This system size will be 2.7 megawatts, it'll be contained in the fenced area here, which is 11 acres, and this, these lots are totally wooded, so this, again, with this project, this is a wooded area in here where the array will be. These, these properties are zoned agricultural residential, and again, with this site, this is being reviewed by the Conservation Commission for a notice of intent, they're looking to us for additional information regarding that. Stormwater report has been submitted, they're reviewing that also. It has been looked at by the Fire Department and Police Department, again, they gave a verbal okay that access was appropriate for them, they had no issues with the site as designed. At previous meetings, those concerns raised by abutters on Courtney Drive regarding screening of the site, which we've tried to address on our plans by doing a couple of things. On this revised plan, you can see we've added some screening to the northwest corner, and we did that by removing some racking on the array, so we removed some panels along this side, brought the fence line in, and now we're providing 31 Colorado Blue Spruce at a height of 10 to 12 feet between the fence and the existing trees, provide screening where they'll be looking at the panels. And I've also provided... They didn't pull back the array, yes. There's a planting plan, revegetation plan, which shows what kind of seed mix we're gonna be using under the array, and we also have specified the spacing for the trees, they'll be 15 feet on center, and staggered along that whole northwestern side, providing screening for residents along Courtney Drive. And also, to see what that's gonna look like in cross-section, I've got a cross-section, and this plan shows where the cross-section was taken, looking from the house, this is the existing tree line, this is all tree in between, tree line that we're leaving, and then we'll be providing the screen trees between the tree line that we're leaving and the fence. So, from line of sight from the house, through the wetlands, it should provide screening to the panels beyond. And that, that's summary of our plans and something we did to provide screening for the abutters.
Thank you, Steve. You know, as we, Steve and Joe, as we go forward next week, it would be nice somehow, and I might be a little new at this, guys, too, but it might be kinda nice if the presentation maybe looked at some of the requirements of the bylaw and answered them so that I didn't have to go one by one by one by one by one by one. All right?
Yeah, sure.
Thank you. All those in favor of the application, would you like to go to the microphone, state your All those that are opposed to the application, will you go to the microphone and speak your name, and we'll take you in order. Alyssa, Alicia, you'll be next.
I wanna speak in favor of it, not opposed.
Oh, sorry, you gotta move quicker.
Yeah, I'm old, I don't move quick. Couple things come to mind. First, I think it's incumbent on the public sector, in this case, the town of Newbury, every chance we get to save fossil fuel, I think we should. I hate to see trees cut, but sometimes it happens. Secondly, we have a bylaw in place, the boards knew it, enforcing it, I think with Town Council and the Selectmen, they're doing a great job, and I don't have any problem with you requiring every, every item that the bylaw asks for be provided by an applicant. I would like to say that the voters spoke at town meeting, and we passed this bylaw, and sometimes it happens in your backyard, and sometimes it doesn't. But the fact is that if it meets every requirement of this bylaw, I think it should pass. If it doesn't, then it certainly shouldn't. Thank you.
Thanks, Steve. Are you ready? All those opposed?
Good evening, everyone. Sorry, I just, we had some technical difficulties here. My name is Greg Marshall, I live at 6 Courtney Drive. Thanks for listening to me. Alicia is, I think everybody knows she'll also be chiming in here as well, so. Caleb, if we could get this back up and running, that would be great.
It's great, thanks, David.
All right, there you go.
Ooh, wow.
Okay, so, this is primarily a perspective from the folks on Courtney Drive, we have spoken to some other folks, but primarily the folks from Courtney Drive. Obviously, there have been some changes to the plan, appreciate the efforts that you guys have made since the last time, however, we still have many concerns, that was one of our concerns. I apologize upfront for my references to football, okay, but I was just trying to make things simple. There are some things here that some people may know and others may not know, okay, so I'm just trying to make it very simple. There'll be one slide with a lot of detail, I'm just gonna breeze right over it, okay? It should be no more than five to 10 minutes. Okay, so we all know the project background, I also apologize if there are some slight misstatements, like 2.9 megawatt solar, I think it's 2.7 here, I think most of the people understand here how many acres are involved, though going through the application, we did see 15 and 16 acres of forested land, so we do wanna get clarification at the end of this on whether or not it's 11 acres for 15 or 16. I think it's also important to know that the state of Massachusetts has been incentivizing solar companies with generous tax credits, that's what's driving this. Now, there are changes in the regulation, I have a slide on that, that really tries to focus these solar plants away from greenfields, okay? It's stated in the bylaws, it's also stated by the Massachusetts, I believe, Department of Energy, there's three or four different departments that participated in a study, and that was very clear. We all know about the new bylaw. Okay, so, I really wanted to show this language because it's very important for this project, and, you know, for the record, I don't oppose, and I don't think anybody on Courtney Drive opposes the other project, okay, the Middle Road project, because we also believe that it meets this intent right here, okay? And so you can see that they strongly discourage designating locations that require significant tree cutting because of the water management issues, the cooling and climate benefits, and they're even changing how they incentivize companies when they're putting in these solar farms, and they're reducing the amount of credit, and they're limiting also the number of megawatts that can be put into these, I think it's emerging growth, or I forget the exact term there.
Managed market.
But, what's that?
Managed market.
Oh, managed market area, which would be greenfield areas. Okay, now I'm gonna go through this, the only thing I wanna point out here, okay, is down at the bottom, okay, this was an article published by Joe, we've seen a lot of this out on the internet, okay, so if anybody's done any research, they'll see this, but this is the new SREC 2, and you'll notice, as you go down Sector A, B, and C, the economic incentives drop, okay? And there is one more, which, it's not called Market Sector D, but it's where this project falls, okay? And so you can see, they're trying to promote residential or carport projects, rooftop projects, landfills, and brownfield projects. And you can see, the incentives get lower and lower, and in this second-to-last bullet here, it is the lowest subsidy factor that they give. And again, they will manage the number of megawatts under this new program. And, you know, you can see also by incentivizing development on these landfills, brownfields, and rooftops, they're appropriately prioritizing productive use on otherwise unused space. And, pardon me, Joe, but those, that was in the article. So I think it's also worth noting on Borrego Solar's website, that, you know, they've been incredibly successful, okay, and I think they've done a lot of good here. So, I'm not against Borrego Solar, none of us are, but you can see the types of projects that they advertise on their website. Everywhere where you see these little green bubbles here are the types of projects that they basically promote to their investors, okay? You don't see, or I don't see, and maybe I'm wrong, any residential projects here, 'cause again, that is not what's being incentivized. Okay, we did our research in Massachusetts where there's been opposition, and basically the opposition has come when you try and put these in the middle of residential areas. Okay, these maps were very difficult for us to see in the room here, so what we did is we also got maps, and I'd just like to point out a couple of things here. Okay, so here's the site that we're talking about, it's about 1,100 feet across, or about four contiguous football fields. The yellow line is our property line, the blue dots there represent structures or houses, okay? So, you can see, and I have a vested interest here, I'm 130 feet from where the prior proposal was for the solar panels or the buffer area here. And I've also highlighted two other properties here on Courtney Drive. Also highlighted here, it's about a football field away from Route 95 as well. A few more maps I wanna show you. Okay, this is a close-up, I think, you know, they've talked about this. By the way, how many panels were removed in your latest proposal? So about 5%? No, maybe less. Okay, it doesn't matter, you can get us that later. Okay, so, this one is a close-up, and just again, for visualization, it's about eight football fields' worth of solar arrays. Hard to tell on those maps. Okay, here's another visual, they're about, I've seen different numbers, I think anywhere from 10 to 12 feet here, that's what they look like. Now, I, this picture was given to us by the folks from Borrego, I superimposed a fifth panel at the top, ignore the ones in the back. Now, also, I think it's important to note the difference of the seasons, right? So this is an overhead view of Courtney Drive in the summer, this is in late fall. I did not doctor these pictures, okay? Couldn't get exactly the same perspective, but you can see, if you look at this, there are very few evergreen trees here, most of the trees are deciduous. So if you also look at line of sight from homes, from the highway, and from Main Street, we believe that the solar panels will be visible. Well, for sure, even in a site walk, it was confirmed, without cutting down any trees, and before the leaves fall, you could see my roof. Okay? Potential lines of sight. Okay, Alicia talked about this. So, at your request, we also studied the bylaws quite extensively, we went through the application quite extensively, and we have a handout that maybe you can use as we go through the bylaws. We've put in our detailed commentary after studying the application, and we've also hired an external consulting firm, et cetera, and we put all of those notes in there as we go through the process of looking at the bylaws. Now, I'm gonna say my concluding statements here, we'll give you a handout that, again, is much more detailed than this, as we go through the bylaws. We strongly support solar, we support the other project, because we think it is appropriately cited. We do not support this in a residential neighborhood. We believe that there are multitude of issues with the project and its location. Now, I think we'll go through all of these here when we go through the bylaws. That's all we have.
Spaceship, spaceship back to normal. Thank you. Thank you very much.
I'm gonna speak to this.
Uh-oh. Anyone else opposed? State, state your name and...
Adam True, longtime resident of Byfield, now of Newbury Port, but currently under contract with Number One Courtney Drive, and it's in a bit of shamble zone right now, so we're gonna try to rehab it and resell the home. So my only concern was against property value, but let me start by saying I'm kind of in, kinda saying yes to this thing, because, you know, I agree that anybody should be able to do with their land what, you know, what they should be able to do within the laws of the town. On the flip side, if it's gonna directly impact anybody in the Courtney Drive area, and they're in the zoning laws, the zoning bylaws, that this shouldn't happen, you know, then I believe it shouldn't. But as far as I'm concerned, on one Courtney Drive, it looks like they've really remediated everything that would be any issue for me, especially with the line of trees here. So other than that, get your next person.
Thanks, Adam.
Alicia? You ready?
Hi, my name's Rich Moran, I live at 4 Courtney Drive. I'm certainly not opposed to solar, I have 33 solar panels on my roof, which is about 1/300 the size of this project. In my case, it's to make electricity for my home, it's not a commercial power plant like they're proposing here. I have concerns, my main concerns are the clear cutting of the woodlot. Trees absorb a lot of water, as Alicia has already pointed out, we are in an area that is a wetland, we're surrounded by wetlands, and where does the water go that all of these trees would be otherwise soaking up, that now that the trees are gone? There are a couple of sort of semantic things I've been hearing both at Conservation Commission and other places, where people are talking about they're replacing the tree with a meadow. This is not a meadow, it's a solar array, there's a big difference. It's a, it's a commercial power plant in a residential neighborhood, and it's not appropriate to the setting. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Now, I'm gonna speak to the document that I passed out to everyone. When Borrego filed their application, I went and photocopied, copied it, and actually went through it all, and I compared it to the by, to the bylaw, so what I'm gonna... to go through it one at a time, and give my, my comments on this. I don't know if you'd like me to continue like this, or how do you want to do it?
What do you figure for time?
We hope so.
Go ahead.
First of all, I want to thank you for listening to us and taking our point of view, because Courtney Drive is not a very big street, somebody could sit home in it, but we do, it is a public way in the town of Newbury, and we love living here, and we want to keep it, keep it like that. Okay? So I did make a copy, I did just put the, I'm not going to read this, I'm going to go through to essence of time. The ground-mounted?
The ground-mounted solar relay, this is the purpose of the bylaw, the states it out pretty quickly. And then I'm going to go down, if I have no comment, you'll see no, no comment. I'm going to go down to number four, the general requirements, project citing. I'm going to repeat with the DOE are, that slide that Greg had, had put up. Project citing, the Massachusetts Department of Energy Resources discourages applicants from selecting locations for ground-mounted solar photovoltaic installations, which require significant tree cutting due to the important water management, cooling, and climate benefits that trees provide. Applicants are therefore encouraged to cite installations on vacant, disturbed land in a manner which will minimize tree cutting to the greatest extent reasonably possible. We believe this principle is being violated. There is also discrepancies on the amount of forest to be clear-cut. The applicant has publicly stated approximately 11 acres, however, the application states up to 16 acres. Next, I have number five. Installation requiring Site Plan Review. This all pertains to that, is, I mean, this is not applicable, because it's not that type of installation. We're going to number six. A, B, and B1, I have no comment. Two, it says, "All such photo, solar photovoltaic installations shall be construed, can be constructed and operated in a manner that minimizes any adverse visual safety and environmental We have still open concerns relating to the environmental and stormwater impacts. The Conservation Commission has not, has not voted on this yet. They do have outstanding issues. We had a peer review performed by Peter Enviro, Environmental, and by the way, you guys are going to all get a binder with all this stuff, so you can take it home. And she has very serious concerns about the way the groundwater was determined. Moving right along to number three, is not applicable.
Alicia?
Yes?
Was, John's gone.
He's right here.
Oh, John. Did those concerns go to the Conservation Commission?
Yes, they did. I can speak to.
Well, they were thoroughly discussed, yeah. All right.
But yeah, they, the ConCon did receive a copy of it. As I recall, Tracy actually read the letter and made a presentation.
All right, so we can discuss that a little more next week.
That really doesn't pertain to this, I think that's really ConComs. I mean, they have, there's been things that they have done, there's other, I mean, they are addressing it, I believe, but I just want this board to be aware that we feel that there are potentially serious problems with that.
There'll be a lot, there'll be a lot of things that we'll probably handle in depth in, you know, coincide thoughts, but on the stormwater, I'm not a stormwater engineer.
Nor am I.
And I am going to deflect to a lot of what my Conservation Commission decides when they look at the documents.
Absolutely. And I just wanted, like I said, this board to be aware that that is that issue.
There's new information on the.
So I'm going to go down here to number three, is not applicable. C, the submission requirements. One, general, no comment. Two, required documents, A through F, no comment. Now G, the bylaw here is G.
So you want a public outreach?
A public outreach plan, including a project development timeline, which indicates how what prob, you know, special permit notification procedures, otherwise formal abutters in the community. We have, my, our comment here is that Interstate 95 abuts the site, and Mass Highway was not notified of this, of this project, they're not on the abutters list. And stormwater may affect their water management system, culverts and such. And I would like to request this board to ask the applicant, to ask Mass Highway to at least take a cursory look at this. As you could see from there, it was pretty close, and I'm not sure if there are questions with the stormwater, if runoff, if their culverts can handle it on 95 excessive water and runoff, we're talking about removing tremendous amounts of trees. Okay? So H is going to be no, no comment. Okay? D is the special permit review criteria. There's an open space and agricultural impact, I guess, report. Consistent with the town's open space preservation goals, the owner of the land on which a large-scale ground-mounted solar photovoltaic installation is proposed to be situated must admit, submit to the SPGA report on the open space impacts, including but not limited to. A is a general description of the installation site, including proximate natural features, flora, fauna, wetlands, and waterways. Our comment to that is that Borrego Solar describes at great length many details regarding the installation site and surrounding streets, foot and car paths, and easements. Streets included in their, in their description, which is in their application, include both Main Street and Interstate 95. Courtney Drive, whose residents are the closest abutters to the site, have been excluded from their description. Now, I have a copy of their, of the application here, and their description of the site takes up. One, two, three, four, five. Five and a half pages description. Never once in that five and a half pages does it even mention Courtney Drive. Okay? Any trees or wildlife would be, letter B. Any trees or wildlife to be displaced by the installation. Borrego initially stated that 11 acres would be cut, whereas the application states that 15 and 16, in two different places, acres of forested land will be clear-cut. We would like to know what the actual number is. Secondly, Borrego stated that there will be a few locations throughout the site where solar panels extend into the 50-foot no-bill zone. However, impacts to the ground surface are minimal, and the structures will be raised to allow vegetative growth below. How many panels will extend into that zone? What is the location of each panel? And how high are the panels off of the ground? Next. C. Any efforts to mitigate groundwater management issues caused by increase in impervious surface. The drainage analysis is incorrect in that the entire analysis of post-developed conditions assume the area of the panels is entirely meadow. This is an incorrect assumption. The panels should be considered to be impervious. It should be modeled as disconnected, impervious area per an independent peer study. Again, I'm going to reference Peer Environmental Consulting. And her calculate, she believes that the calculation should be rerun using that assumption. D and E, we have no comment at this time. F, determining whether to issue a special permit, the special permit granting authority shall consider the open space and agricultural impact report and the corresponding impacts. The residents, we'd like to see a copy of that, if it's been submitted to you yet. The letter G, land clearing. Soil erosion and habitat impacts, clearing of natural vegetation shall be limited to what is necessary for the construction, operation, and maintenance of the ground-mounted solar photovoltaic installation, or otherwise prescribed by applicable laws, regulations, and bylaws, including the code of the town of Newbury, Chapter 87, Stormwater Management and Illicit Discharge and Erosion Control. In determining whether to issue a special permit, the special permit granting authority shall consider such impacts and efforts to mitigate them. The applicant and any co-applicants may be required to replace up to 100% of any and all trees with a caliber six inches or over that are removed from this project, or for the project, I should say. Okay? Our comment is, since the trees were never cataloged, how is this bylaw going to be enforced? Will Borrego be subject to it at all? And they, they mention a forester report in the application. We would like to see a copy of that forester report to see exactly what the trees are. In G, Borrego's comment is no comment.
Alicia?
Yep.
When you're going through this, Damon's kicking me, saying, "I told you so about the trees," but.
He's a good boy.
As we go forward, we've got the bylaw, most people have this in the audience. Don't, I'm not going to tell you what to do. I think you do not, you can reference in maybe a couple of words, like G land clearing, and go to comment.
Okay. Do you want me to do that?
Be quicker, because we're all reading it right with you.
Okay, absolutely. Okay. So our other comment here is, as previously mentioned, we believe the stormwater calculations were incorrect. An outside engineering firm reviewed the calculations, and they agree with Peter Environmental that the stormwater calculations need to be revised, provide mitigation, and/or detentions. The guidelines that Borrego has used are a state guidebook for putting solar arrays on landfills. This development is not on a closed landfill and does not have a pre-existing stormwater system. Closed landfills already have a stormwater system in place. This development is on undeveloped land, the two situations are totally different, and hence puts into question the validity of the applicant's study. H and I are no comment. Moving on to two, number two, the special permit granting authority may grant a special permit upon finding that the proposed use meeting, the standards specified in Chapter 97's, all right, following general standards. A, the proposed use and development will not have a substantial or undue adverse effect upon adjacent property, the character of the area, or the public health, safety, and general welfare. Courtney Drive directly abuts this project, and there is no mention of this fact by Borrego in their application. Borrego states that the closest home is 375 feet, when in fact, the closest property line is Six Courtney Drive, located 130 feet away. There's a table here that describes the homes, the closest home is Six Courtney, again, the distance from the home to the panels, and this is pre, this change that they have made, so we would have to take a look at that again. It's 350 feet, and everybody can see, we are here. This project is visible from Courtney Drive, and will have a detrimental impact to property values, as attested by many local real estate brokers. Given that the advent of solar power plants is a relatively new phenomenon, there are no studies that show their impact when placed in residential areas. However, Realtors will attest to the negative impact to adjacent properties when there exists a commercial installation, and we have a binder with five letters from different local real estate brokers that have attested to this very fact. Actually, can you get me a book? I want to read one letter, a short one. B, the nature and intensity, I'm going to come back to that last.
Just read a couple of sentences, nature and intensity. Go to comment.
Yep. Of the intended operations will not discourage the appropriate development and use of the adjacent land and buildings, and not impair the value thereof. The project will be visible from Courtney Drive residences, and will have a detrimental impact to property values, as attested by most real estate letters. Now, the first one, this is from the recent Realtor that just transferred the property at One Courtney Drive. Adam is here. Adam, when did you?
Yeah, we're here.
When did you transfer that?
It will be transferred in like 15 days.
Okay, so it hasn't even closed yet, okay? I am, this is to whom it may concern, this is from the real estate broker from the Bean Group.
B-E-A-N.
B-E-A-N. To whom it may concern, I am a local Realtor in the Greater Newbury Port Association of Realtors since 1985, and have served the North Shore and Southern New Hampshire for almost 30 years. It is my professional opinion that the proposed solar farm in Newbury, Mass, in the Courtney Drive area will hurt local real estate values. I do not have a lot of experience with this exact type of use, however, I can tell you I have experienced difficulty and diminished values where residential properties abut other uses, such as high-tension wires, uses that create noise or aesthetic issues with the local scenery. In Newbury Port, for instance, the wind turbines, the local residents have experienced issues with noise and glare from the turbines. No one thought such a use should be such a nuisance to the neighbors, but that is one example locally, right here in our community. I have a property now in the market at One Courtney Drive, and it had to be priced to what I consider below market value, with this proposed solar farm being one consideration when pricing it. There are others, such as condition of the property, et cetera. However, when disclosing the potential for the solar farm to prospective buyers, many were alarmed and backed away from offering on this property.
Which they didn't disclose, by the way.
Beautiful.
So you know.
It doesn't seem to be the right location for this use. There must be other areas that are already zoned for such uses, not right in the heart of a country-setting, residentially-zoned neighborhood. Please feel free to ask me for my resume or professional experience if needed. Respectfully, Valerie McIlroy, managing broker, sales consultant for the Bean Group in Newbury, in Newbury Port. I have one from Stone Ridge, one from Caldwell Banker.
Now, Alicia, just for the sake of discussion, are there any real comps? Are there any real examples?
This, this is the issue, is why people are so opposed to placing residential, placing these types of commercial installations in a residential facility. I have spoke with the, there's a group that, what I want to call them the Massachusetts Board of Assessors, I believe Select MBEAR also spoke to the same person. They are like a listserv, if anybody knows what a listserv is. They answer questions for the surrounding state boards of assessors' office. And he said, he said, and forgive me, I don't have his name at the tip of my tongue, but I can get that information for you, that this is a hot topic right now in the Commonwealth, because there is no history to this.
Okay.
So, but that being said, there is history as far as high-tension wires go, and as far, as far as commercial installations put in residential properties. The reason why we have zoning, period, is to prevent these types of land use issues. Okay? Next. I shouldn't say the reason, one of the reasons for zoning.
D, we looked at already.
Okay. So we are on B?
No, D.
B? Okay.
We looked at it, that's the parking.
Okay. Borrego states the application, okay, so there is no place for parked vehicles?
You can get over that one.
Okay? The entire project, I only want, I, I only want what's required in the by, the bylaw. Two, two automobiles and three trucks, please. The entire project site shall be screened at all seasons of, of the year. Our comment on this is Borrego Solar does not address the visual impacts to any of the abutters. Six Courtney Drive is located 130 feet from the proposed site, and it was confirmed during a site visit that this residence could be seen before the cutting of the trees and before the leaves fall. Now, they have addressed this, and I'm not quite sure if this is even acceptable to us, but we'll take it under advisement. In conclusion, most of the trees surrounding this proposed site are deciduous, hence the solar plant will be clearly visible to the abutters on Courtney. Given that a visual study has not been done in all four seasons, the applicant cannot confirm the full visual impact to the remaining abutters. Okay? The volume of cut and fill. Comment. Borrego has stated that no additional grading is necessary to accommodate the solar facility. The elevations on the site question the validity of this statement. In addition, we do not believe that the site can accommodate meadow grass in many areas. Borrego has stated publicly in the past that there will be 11 acres of forested land. The application for the special permit states conflicting acreage, again, to be clear-cut, 15 and 16 acres. How do we know which is the accurate number? There are also detail on the access to the electrical system requested by the Conservation Commission that is still outstanding. Okay, next, I. The adequate provisions for stormwater. I'm gonna pass over that, because we've already covered it. J, obstruction of scenic views from publicly accessed locations shall be minimized. Again, site will be visible from Courtney Drive. No mention of Courtney Drive in their application. Unknown if site will be visible from Main Street or 95. K, no comment at this time. L, sound impacts from transformers, inverters, and other electrical equipment. Comment, the inverters are located 475 feet from the property line, 710 feet from the closest home. What guarantee will Courtney Drive have that the sound won't bounce off the solar panels and reverberate back to us? We require a sound study be done. Any questions on that one? Okay. Unreason, M, unreasonable departure from the character, materials, and scale of buildings in the vicinity. Borrego Solar has no plans to replace any trees they have clear cut. Racking height is unknown due to terrain grading. It will be visible to Courtney Drive. There are 16-foot elevation differences across the site. This will increase possibility of site viewing in other areas. We require a visual study to be done, showing the impact in all four seasons. N is the final action. We would like to know how the abutting residents, how will the abutting residents be notified that all of the issues addressed in this document have been satisfactorily resolved? And that's the end of that, of that section. I'm gonna go back to the height issue, because Greg actually has a really big issue with this, because he's the closest one. The height, the site maps indicate that there will be a 14 to 16-foot elevation differences from the adjacent grade. Given that the structure will be approximately 11 feet high, this would place the structures at 27 feet high from adjacent grade. That is unacceptable, and it violates the by, the bylaw. Also, under number 11, design standards, lighting. With motion sensors, lights will be visible to residents on Courtney Drive. Noise. We request that the inverter and traffic noise be measured both at the property line and at the nearest home to ensure it is within bylaw limits. Abutters who would also request assurances that current traffic noise will not increase as a result of the proposed project. And there you have it.
You've done a lot of homework.
This is, and you know what? In closing, I do, I do want to say this. This is our largest asset. This is our homes. And I am very torn between telling a property owner what they can and cannot do with their, with their private property. Very torn. But at the end of the day, his right to develop his property as he sees fit ends at my right to protect the value of my property as I see fit. And that's the way I feel. And I want no, no ill will with, with, with Kevy, but at the, I mean, we see each other, I know his kids, I love his daughter, but this is a... The idea of solar energy is a great thing, but it is inappropriately cited in a residential area. And another thing, if this goes through on Courtney Drive, you better believe that there are going to be farms all over Newbury that are going to allow a, you've opened the door, you've opened the Pandora's box, and they will have, they will have, you can't, you'll have them everywhere. They belong, the one, the other, the other site that is, that is appropriately cited on Route 1 and, and Middle Road, you have no opposition to that, because it is appropriately cited in a correctly zoned environment. And even though the bylaw says you can do it, just because you can doesn't mean you shouldn't.
Alicia, thanks. Any, anyone else?
Oh.
And, and just before you speak, can I mention this, and you, I hope you can all hear me? You have a lot of directives from, or will from town council. You have a letter from the planning board. You will have this, and maybe another comment forthcoming. Do me a favor, when we go over this next week, make my life easier, all right? We gotta have the bylaw strictly adhered to, and a lot of these questions put in perspective.
Oh, I have a very brief comment. My name is Patricia Robinson, and I live on Nob Hill in Byfield. And my husband's here, another neighbor. There are other people in Newbury that are very, very concerned about this change, because ultimately, it can reflect the whole, you know, can happen in the whole town to other property owners. And so, I think it's important, because all we hear now, of course, is the ones that are mostly affected by it, the abutters, but there are a lot of other people concerned about it, and I think that the selectmen need to know that this is out there.
Thank you very much. Is there, is there, yep, go ahead. Name and address again.
Phil Tru, 150 Main Street. I'm also in favor of solar power, and I have to agree with the other comments, that there are appropriate sites, industrial sites, commercially zoned sites. A thing that worries me, though, is these projects would not be financed if they didn't have the state S-Rex, the solar renewable energy certificates, and the federal tax credit. If you lose either one of those, the financing just doesn't happen. They don't, they don't work. They don't get their money back. In two years, the, the federal tax credit is gonna expire, and it may not get renewed, depending upon what happens with the next administration. So, you do have to watch out for the financial impacts, and will the companies be able to handle issues in the future, like pulling the arrays out, or performing maintenance, or if there's damage? So, there is, there's a timetable here that's coming up pretty soon, and it's gonna affect all these solar developers.
Thanks, Phil.
John.
I live on Main Street in Byfield. My name is Joni Purinton, and I've lived here for 55 years. We, we love the town. We love the way it was. We like the way it's emerging. We love the rural character. I believe thoroughly that this massive energy operation, a commercial operation in a single-family home, single-family zoned area, will have an adverse effect on all the property taxes of the surrounding homes. It will also impact and impair the development of the adjacent area and the tax base of adjacent areas, of homes which could be built, homes which are built. Because I know from real estate, people are very, very, very sight-conscious. They look all around, they drive up and down, they look at maps, overhead maps, and seeing this massive reflective, well, it's an energy plant, is going to mean that buyers of homes in the area will look elsewhere. I, I can promise you that. I also have a historic, I'm a historic real estate agent. I'm one of the, one of the long-term historic property agents in, in the area, and I know that what surrounds a property is very important to buyers. So, hopefully, the other, the taxes, the $50,000 in taxes, you're gonna lose on other properties. So, don't look at that as if it's a, it's, it's a great bonus, because it isn't. You, you build, if you build eight houses in the area that are selling in the sixes, you're gonna make up those, you're gonna have more than 50,000 in taxes. So, I think that the, the financial argument is, is, is no good. It's false. Finally, the other depressing thing is that if you buy variance, if you create a commercial area in a single-family agricultural area, you can do it. You can do it with, with this legislation that unfortunately is rather flawed. But it opens the door to it happening all over town. Once you do that, once you make a variance, that can happen again, and again, and again, and the character of the town will change, and it will become more commercial. So, I say, take, take it easy on this. Look around. I don't, I, I, I'm not averse to the one on Route 1, and I certainly am an environmentalist. I've given land, my own land, for conservation and saved a lot of land. So, I, I, I love green energy. I'm all for it, but I think this is too much, and it's in the wrong place. So, think hard. Thank you.
Alicia, one, one last word.
Last comment that I, I forgot to say was that mentioned, is that when you think about the local real estate people that market homes, Google Earth, the ways that we, you guys probably bought your homes many years ago, you got, you drove out to the country and you went to look and see. People don't do that anymore. They go online, they go to Google Earth, and when you Google Earth my property, or you Google Earth as far as up Main Street, it's gonna come right down, it's gonna zone in, and you're gonna see a 9,000-panel solar array. And if you don't think that's gonna affect the property value, you're, you're dead wrong. And it's gonna affect the whole area. And then you're gonna have a whole bunch of other townsfolk coming up looking for abatements. So, this could be a slippery slope that you do not want to go down. Thank you.
All right. Thank everyone for their comments. We're gonna entertain a motion. We still have the town administrators' report and the rest of our selectmen's meeting to finish tonight. So, I appreciate, and there'll be more to come, so I'll entertain a motion for continuance of the public hearing.
To a date and time certain.
Yep. September 9th at 8 o'clock. Okay? Second?
Thirty-five.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone. Miss Town Administrator.
I can hold my report till next meeting.
Yeah, it's up to you.
It's fine.
Town Administrator will hold her report.
Lisa, thank you.
Lisa, thank you. Let me know. All right, do me a favor, folks. Would everyone clear the room, please, that's not involved in the meeting? Or everyone has to be quiet? Thanks.
Thank you.
Please.
Thank you.
Yes.
All right, we, we need to sign an alcoholic beverage license for Plum Crazy. If you can remember, guys, not so very long ago, they came before us, then they went before the, is it A-B-B-C or?
A-B-C-C.
And they were able to obtain the next step or hurdle, and they got that done, so... Kathy, what are we looking at? We are gonna be signing this document in front of us tonight, right?
Yes.
All right. So, that's Plum Crazy down the island.
Yeah, right. Mine is good.
Well, is there a formal one coming our way? Yep, there's a formal one coming our way. You mean...
Rogers, I don't have the journal.
Oh, here, we'll read this. All right.
There you go.
All right. All right. I might have an old agenda as opposed to a new agenda, so if there's any problems, let me know. So, can I hear a motion on the signing of that license?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right. Any discussion?
None.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. We'll get that in front of us in a second. We have chapter 90, project requests, reimbursement requests. Where's chapter 90, Chuck?
Yeah, what is it?
All right. I kind of looked at these, and Tracy, you're gonna give me a little more input down the end. Is this money been spent, and we're getting reimbursed? Or what are we doing with this, and we'll sign that?
No, these are projects that require your approval.
Okay.
No, two of them. Chapter 90 project requests.
So, the first two, let's get a handle on this, and we'll see what we're doing here.
Byfield Village is for reimbursement requests.
Okay. Now, Byfield Village is a 1584, 4344?
Yep, and 1295678.
And, so why don't we treat these together, I guess?
Sure.
Yep.
You can treat them all together if you want.
Well, the other one is a request, is the other one for?
It's a new project for Church Street for a normal way.
So, yeah, so that's gonna be, so why don't we, let's do this. I like a motion on the request for reimbursement, signing those. I like a motion on those.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. So, going to the next part of that request from chapter 90 funds, this is request for the board for actually doing this project. Chuck, answer that for me, you've been involved.
Mm-hmm. Yes.
Doing, is that, is that queued up in a line? Is this the one we're supposed to do?
It will be, if you execute it.
Huh?
If you execute the document, it will be.
Okay. Chuck, you've been working on this. What's going, is, is this what we had talked about doing?
Is this the Church Street one?
Yes.
Yes, it is. The ends of the road are gonna be the only major changes on it, and that is Merrimack Valley Planning approved. They wanted to basically make the road more of a T-bone than an angle the way it is.
Now, did that kinda line up with what Merrimack Valley was talking about? Are we okay?
That's, that's the whole project that's developing.
Right. So, this is a piece of it?
I guess you could call it that, if you really wanted to, yeah.
And this is for, what, $52,000?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
So, there are no major drainage issues there, there are no drains. And, seriously needs to be done, because...
Up to the board then?
We're gonna lose that road if we plow it this year.
All right, so...
So, I mean, this is a must, must do.
What does, what would the board like to do, make a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion?
Oh.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, done. All right, minutes.
Thank you, John.
You're welcome. Minutes of July 22nd, a nice short selectmen's meeting.
Motion to approve is written.
Second, any, from anyone?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Under communications, this is just an update for probably me to update.
That's the trash?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, as I understood this, there was a little bit of back discussion after, was it Ellen? Tracy, was, who was it that we discussed with, the trash with? Is it Ellen?
I think it's Ellen.
Yeah, Ellen Daly. All right. So, Ellen is relating to us that the situation regarding the dumps at the end of Pom Island, they added a regular pickup. This is the Pom Island Foundation. They did this immediately following our discussion. It seems that it's being paid for, and it also seems to be, as I read this, working. From the next page, it seems that a Board of Health meeting on July 15th, Steve still here? No? As I understand it, they discussed it, and this is kind of what their finding was, the Pom Island Trash Health Agent, the Pom Island Trash is an issue. Health Agent Deborah Rogers informed the board about the complaint regarding the dumpster in Pom Island. The Pom Island Foundation had provided funds for a dumpster at the center, and the complaint was regarding the trash overflowing, the dumpster not being able to handle both trash created by a large number of beef growers and other things, most likely. It had been taken care of. The dumpster had been emptied, and scattered debris had also been picked up. Deborah Rogers informed the complainant that there were three things that could be done, and it's the same things that we talked about. Get a bigger dumpster, dump more frequently, remove the dumpster, and everyone could take their stuff home. So, for at least right now, I think we seem to be okay, right?
For right now.
For right now.
Yep.
So, there'll be more news forthcoming. So, did that end my, no, we got the refi- So, did that end my, no, we got the refinance report. What are we doing with this, Tracy?
This is just for your review.
Okay. We have.
I have one thing on communications to when you're done.
All right, let me just go back to my.
I have to, the next, we have a request from Triton High School cheering to hold a car wash in the town hall parking lot.
All right, is that on this updated agenda?
Yeah, it is. And I think it was somebody here earlier.
How come they didn't stay?
Didn't play your act.
All right, so, as Kathy did tell us, our audit report for year-ending 6/30/13 and supporting letters is in front of us for our review. There's been a request to Tracy for permission for Triton High School cheer, cheering to hold a car wash in the town hall parking lot. See the email. What are we going to do with this, guys? I mean, is it something we've got to take in? What day was it?
This, I think it's the same.
Uh, here it is. All right, cheerleader, Triton High School cheerleader car wash. Hi, Tracy. I was given your contact by way of Christine Marshall. Her daughter Caitlin is my JV coach for the Triton US, for the Triton High School cheerleading. We are looking to have a car wash as a fundraiser for our program some weekend in early September, and we were wondering if we could use the town hall parking lot. We would bring all our supplies and run the car wash from 8:00 to 12:00. My varsity team won the state championship and hoping to, on and on and on. I think that would be a great idea, but I mean, we have to probably check, I imagine, that's kind of a nasty corner out there, our parking lot. I mean, should we, should we ask, I just wonder, should they ask Mike, the police chief? And I mean, they got to kind of go through a little bit of a process here.
Sure, if they wash the cruisers.
So, I think our question back to them would be, I would be fine with this, and I entertain anything from my board, but I think they have to maybe clear it a little bit with the police chief to see if there's any safety hazards. And I wonder if, you know, there might be another place, maybe the fire station. Go ahead.
Yeah, I was just going to ask if they actually have water.
If we do, we have a hose out there.
We have a hose out there, and.
Where it goes, I don't know.
Yeah. Some favor about the cleaners and what they use, because someone, they just use strong detergent or something like that, someone will complain about it going into the sewers.
You know what? And if they use a lot of water, I wanted me to spin up.
No, but you know what? We're on second, and we're low here. Will that cause us a problem with runoff?
Yeah. Well, I think if, I mean, I, let's talk a little more. To me, if it's in that parking lot and it doesn't produce a safety hazard, and there are no undue chemical, but I mean, the water is going to run out in the street, some person on a bike could be riding down the street and slipping, I mean, I don't know. That's not my, you know.
Yeah, I'd love to support them, but I think that we need to get some other people's input on it.
Yep.
Like Mike's.
Yep, so we.
From a stormwater standpoint, EPA would not be thrilled, okay? To say the least.
All right.
At, at the very least, though, you've got a long run to discharge, so there'd be a reasonable chance of some, some aberration of the water. If you had it, for example, out back where the storm drags through straight to the letten end, that would not be a good thing. You know, I can't think of Brooklyn's top to cover.
My only concern, the minute I saw this, is my truck is big and long, and I have trouble pulling out of here sometimes if it's busy. I would hate to see someone get hurt because of, and if they continue down this path as a request to us, at least as a suggestion from the chair, I think the board ought to ask them to run it by the police chief. So, is that enough?
I think that's a good plan. They could maybe talk to Doug, too, about environmentally friendly, so.
Yeah, so that it'll actually turn into a little lesson plan.
Yeah.
All right. What else do we have? Anything else in this?
I have one small thing. I had lunch with Larry Glazbrook the other day, who was the head of the Northeast Region for DOT. I requested him to call whoever was in charge of calling a bridge, a bridge. The reason for this is the Main Street Bridge over the Parker River. Nobody could identify whether it was a culvert or whether it was a bridge. The reason this makes a huge difference is we have other bridges in town that the state has stepped in and helped us rebuild. Hay Street, Newman Road, Lock and Row. I was searching for assistance on this. Larry did contact the correct gentleman, and it is designated on the state computer a bridge. So, my request to you gentlemen tonight is to allow me to write a letter to the state board that will give us some assistance in rebuilding or repairing that bridge, so.
Anyone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion if we do it.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. And this is a huge deal, because we've already got a lot of chapter 90 money designated to repair the bridge. The state will step in and help us, and we're that much more ahead, so. Thank you, Dylan.
All right. Can we entertain a motion to adjourn and still sign the light, the alcohol license and everything, or do we have to do?
Yeah.
All right, so.
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Chairman.
Second?
Second.
All, any discussion? All those in favor?
This is where it's got to go.